Well, I don't care if this is broadcast on YouTube, but it was a highlight of my day once last week. There were two red-breasted nut hatches, a Downey, a Harry, of course, the stellar Jays, and the Chickadees. It's like, oh, my gosh. And of course, the difference between a professional photographer and an amateur is the professional always has his camera, and mine was at home.
I guess that would make my son a pro. He's got the camera with him all the time. Now, Margaret put out some suet today, and boy, is that a popular dish for the one particular woodpecker who's man up there just going at it.
We think Piney put a salt lick up on the mountain by like Glory Hall, that little wetland up there. This was there every day.
Um, in summer?
In summer.
Yeah.
First contraction.
I've actually had somebody call me up and say, so when do the moose get here? I don't know, call Piney.
Well, let me look at their calendar and see what.
You just missed him. It was last week.
Yeah.
With all the construction over here, man, the wildlife are big animals are just not around anymore. I assume they'll come back when people stop banging nails, but we had, we had no moose visitation this year. A few deer wandered through, but usually you see a lot of the moose.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing any moose last summer. It must, I'm pretty sure there are some around. Are are we sure that Craig has an invitation and access? Whomever's running this? Okay.
He was on the list.
Good. Oh, there. Oh, whoops. There he is. Got it. Good. All right.
Roger, if you could just give me like a 10 second warning before you plan to start.
Okay. I thought I'd just wait for the clock to turn 30.
Okay.
Yeah, and there was, there's 10, there's 30, so 10 seconds. Okay, good. You're kind of a producer today, Molly. All right, welcome to the Alta Town Budget Committee of February 8th, 2023. 1:30 in the afternoon, and these are Deputy Town Clerk Molly Austin, Town Clerk Jen Clancy, Councilmember John Byrne, Town Minister John Goldner, Assistant Town Minister Chris Colley, Town Attorney Polly McLean, Downtown Councilmember Sheridan Davis, Treasurer Craig Highmark, Councilmember Elise Morgan, and Mayor me. Okay, so discussion today is on the fiscal 24 town budget, and Craig, our treasurer, has something to say about all that.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I noticed that you're down a council member. Has, does anyone know she's not coming or?
It's a budget committee meeting, so she usually doesn't go to those. It's not, she'll join us for the regular council meeting, I believe.
Yes, yes, and she told me that. So it's a budget committee meeting, and which council members are invited but not required.
Okay.
Right? Yep. Okay, take it away, Craig. You're muted.
Yep, okay. Thank you very much, Roger. And I just want to start by reminding people of where we started last October. At that time, we reviewed a slide presentation that outlined a number of suggested changes to our budget process. The most important ones that we were dividing the budgeting process into basically the three underlying drivers of increases or changes in the budget. Specifically, we called out, we wanted to focus on changes in salaries and the number of TOA staff. So think of that as any change in our internal payroll. Second component is changes in the outside vendor contracts that we have, and we have a number of those. And the third one is changes in our scheduled projects, which is where most of the discretionary sort of decisions lie. So we also suggested a change in the financial reporting to make it easier for Town of Alta Council and interested citizens and stakeholders to understand where and why the money is being spent. So today, I'm happy to report that we're making progress on all these items. So let me dive first into the salary budgeting part. And if you guys remember in our December meeting, we presented a work in progress snapshot of the Mike Swallow pay benchmarking study that we thought needed to precede any decisions on salaries. Mike, in my estimation, has a very complex but very thorough methodology, and I hope that presentation from, from Mike convinced you of the thoroughness of this methodology and also the importance of periodically doing outside benchmarking. December was largely based on Mike's view, was very much sort of a work in progress. Since then, John Goldner and Jen have met with Mike, I think, a couple of times to refine the initial estimates. They just got the latest stuff back from that. I, I haven't had a chance to review it, but you know, I think the preliminary glance at it is that while some of the details have changed, the headlines that we discussed in December more or less remain the same. And the headlines that we, that we called out from that benchmarking study was that it looks like our top level people are significantly out of line with the market. So that's the decision item that, that you as the town council will face. I think you, I think that you'll be prepared to do that either next month or certainly by April. And I'm going to suggest that in order to well, actually, there are two decisions. One, what do you want to do about the top level staff being out of line with the market? And that ranges from nothing to, you know, adjusting things, you know, in a single year. I think the second issue that will drive any changes in the salary is whether we need to add any headcount. I did see that we just added somebody recently, and then the question is, are there more that we need to hire in the next fiscal year? So I expect all that stuff to be ready for a council decision maybe next month or the month after. I think it's probably going to be best to do that in a closed session, similar to the closed session that you had at the December meeting. But let me pause there. That's, that's where we are on the salary benchmarking and then making the decisions around any salary changes and also the total payroll. So what kind of assumptions are Jen going to use for the first draft of the budget? Like, increase overall or something? Yeah, it's going to be an increase, John. I mean, I don't think that's any surprise based upon either the December normal COA and some of the comments and discussions we've had about do we need additional staff? So it will definitely be an increase. I think the question is how much and what do you want to do about it? And I think that the, you know, Rogers got to get a little bit more, the work from Mike Swallow is not finished yet. And I think before Roger reviews that work and makes his final recommendations, we, we have to complete it first, so. I, I'm not in a position that I want to pro offer headline guesses to what the increase might be.
Let me ask a question of Polly, which is, in order to have a closed session, is it does consideration of salaries for staff adequate for justifying a closed session?
No, it has to just be, it's only meant for personnel. And, you know, always think about, kind of the bottom line rule is anything having to do with money is always going to be, other than like litigation settlement, real estate purchase. But generally, money is, requires a lot of transparency, right? Which is why you have a public hearing for your budget. So no salary. I mean, if you're in like a negotiation for a contract, that portion could be in closed session. But the general ranges, the general salaries, that would not be. Does that answer your question?
It does mine, yeah. Let's say that we had three applicants for a position, and we were trying to decide which of those we would make an offer to. Can that be done in closed session?
So the ultimate, like, if there's going to be a vote, that would have to happen in open session. But if the entire council was involved in the decision-making process, you could do discussion of the applicants in open session. And I'm trying, I, I mean, in closed session, and I'm trying to remember, but I think generally what people, what other municipalities tend to do is the interviews are open to the public. But they ask that the other applicants not listen in. But I, I can go and look at that. You can definitely have, where you're evaluating each person, you can have that in closed session, but the decision has to be in public.
Yeah, okay, decision could be in public, but the, but the evaluation and discussion of the relative merits and strengths and weaknesses can be enclosed. Okay.
Yep, that falls under personnel.
All right, okay. All right, I kind of derailed things, Craig, because of the prospect of a closed session, but let's, let's go back to what your questions were.
Well, effectively said, there, there are two. What are we going to do about the, the top line person, the, the top paid personnel in, in our salary structure this year? That, if I understood Polly's stuff, falls sort of under the personnel part, and I would and I would hope that sometime in the near future, we would be getting some progress on the interviewing process for the open position that we've got published right now for the town manager. So that's one, one decision that we have. And the other one is, do, do you think we need to increase the pay, the number of positions that we have next year to increase our capacity for any reason?
Okay. Let's, let's see. This is a meeting of the Budget Committee, which is Elise, John, and me. So let, let's them, let, let them answer this first. So, John?
Um, with respect to the salary adjustment for the top couple of people, and, and just working from the numbers that were presented at the last meeting, I don't have a copy of the final study and, and, and that's fine. I, I would think that we'd want to be able to say to those couple of people that we're on a path to get them to at least the midpoint of the range over the next two fiscal years. So that it's a stepping stone and and there's a clear path to the salary adjustment. I think it'd be beyond anyone's expectations to have the full adjustment the first year or year, because some of them are just so far behind. So I think getting there over a couple of years would make sense to me. And then what was the second question? It was the number of people, do you think we need to hire, create a, a new position? You know, there's been some back channel talk about, you know, that prior to even to John's change of status. You know, it's hard to tell because we don't know what the new, the new talented manager, town administrator skills are going to be, so. I certainly would let that person get in place and settle in before we immediately tried to hire another person. I definitely wouldn't want to try to hire another person before we got the town administrator job. Signs sealed, delivered, the guy starts work, or the person starts work, excuse me. You know, so that's, I guess that's how I see that. I, I personally felt for some time that we were maybe half a person life. Especially if the window, you know, if we're operating in this paradigm where we think the window for capex projects over the next year or two probably is the window's open, let's get some stuff done. The money seems to be here right now. You know, I think as an accretive duty for John, that would have been really tough. I mean, I think his day was already pretty maxed out doing all the things, you know, building administration and such, and so I thought that we were, I was open-minded to us hiring another person or half a person, ramrod type person, as I've referred to them in the past, but so hard to say, I guess, would be the bottom line to all that. Hard to say.
Elise, do you want to speak to this?
Ah, I, I didn't really know what we were talking about for this budget meeting, so I, I don't really have thoughts on it right now. I do am of the mind that we should just take things slowly. I mean, I don't, I agree with John Byrne that I think we need to hire the one position that we're looking for right now, and then we can see how things trickle down. You know, maybe there are staff that wants to do more that can step up, maybe things can get reshuffled. I mean, I just don't know. Maybe this person's gonna not have as much land use planning, and we might have to hire that kind of position. I, I don't think we know what we're going to need until we hire this person. And then I, I don't know about salaries either, because I don't know what this person. Again, I don't know what we're looking for, applicants are going to be asking for. I mean, we could have somebody that's going to try to negotiate a top salary that we want. We could have someone that's willing to take the lower salary. And that's a big salary range we put on that job posting, so. I think it just kind of depends. And again, I wasn't really knowing what we were talking about, so I don't have an answer prepared. Sorry.
Okay. All right, well, I think I certainly agree that it makes sense, you know, well, first we'll hire the town administrator, town manager, and my, I'm going to, I'm going to start referring to people referring to this physician as the chief of staff. And that would certainly come before, aren't anybody else? And in terms of trying to get salaries of current, of our current staff better aligned with the market, I think that over a period of two years would be appropriate interval. So I guess that's my take on these two things. Craig, you, oh, John has wholly in his standup.
And you're all on the exact right track. Go a little bit, go slowly. And the new manager, chief of staff, I mean, that person's job will be to assess what's happening in the town office and throughout the town, and then that person will be able to tell you, it's like, geez, this is what we need. So theoretically, you don't have to worry about that quite yet.
Great. But, but we should budget for it.
Yes.
Even though, right.
I mean, the other thing that, you know, we, we don't have the biggest budget. So in some ways, like, yeah, it'd be great if we could hire several staff members, but we may not be able to. I mean, we don't. So that's probably part of it, feels like we need to see what this person is going to get paid. We do need to catch other people up. We need to see what we're missing in the office. And then we got to see what our budget is. I mean, we don't, I've been on this budget committee for a long time when things are running pretty lean, and so I just don't know if we, we may not have the ability to hire another staff member. It'd be great, but again, I think we just got to wait and see. Hopefully, this new chief of staff, manager, whatever, whatever we're calling the physician. You know, they, during your interview process, I'm sure they're going to have some ideas about what they want to do, what they're looking for. And I think we just need to wait and see. I mean, it'd be, I just don't know if we're going to have something by the next fiscal budget. I guess is what I'm trying to get at. I feel like we're not going to be able to budget for this for the June meeting, because I feel like this person's going to hopefully get hired sometime. Hope luckily, we'll, we'll be lucky enough to get somebody in mid to late March, the position, you know, applications on the third. They're going to need a couple of months to figure things out. I just don't think we're going to have a budget ready to know if we're going to need another staff member by the June fiscal year.
There's also a lot of uncertainty, a little bit of uncertainty starting to creep in on the revenue side too, right? You know, with the Skier being sort of on pace, or you know, Mike's, Mike's description of the season today was a little less positive la, last month than it had been in the past. You know, and we haven't budgeted a big increase in revenue. But we're, we've gotten pretty used to big increases in revenue the last few years. So it'll be interesting to see how the ski season pans out for both the lodges and for the Skier.
Yeah. Yep, Sheridan, excuse me. Sheridan, did you want to say?
Oh, thank you. I, I'd love to see this study too, sooner rather than later, as, as soon as it's completed or nearing completion. I, I feel like drilling down into that is, in my mind, critical in understanding and beginning to get our arms around what we're looking at here.
But you're talking about the salary study, the Mike Swallow's work.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
Yes, and I, I think it's highly appropriate, and it will be shared. As I said, it's, it's still a work in progress, but I think it'll be finalized relatively soon. And we can share it at that time. The, I do remind people of two things. I think John Byrne's comments about, you know, sort of the projection from, from ski lifts was a little less rosy last time than, than I would have expected. But that said, last year, we had a, we generated cash of about $400,000, which we then detailed into the capital fund project. So we have had a history of generating surpluses over the last few years. I don't see any reason at this point in time to expect that to not be the case again this year. The second thing that I do want to point out is there's a big difference between a budget and authority to hire. The sequencing decision, which, which I think John Gildner and others talked about of, okay, let's get our town manager position done first. That's really the decision to hire, but the budget should be our best guess of whether we think we need to add a position and when we might add that position. And we can incorporate that all into a budget on a best guess basis, and that's effectively what budgets are. All right, we're only have nine minutes left. I had three other topics to cover, so we're not going to cover all those topics today. So let me just give you some headlines on a couple of things. The capital budget stuff, there's a project committee, a capital budget project committee meeting. Have you got that scheduled yet, Chris? I know you were trying to do that.
No, I'm sort of waiting for Mike Mori to get back from being away all week, unfortunately. I, so anyway, yeah.
All right, but we need to get that meeting done soon so that in the next, you know, in the next council meeting, we've got, we've got something to discuss on the capital budget, because that's, that's going to be, I think, a, a longer discussion. On the simplified reporting, I want to tell you that A, it's really hard, and, and it's partially hard because it's not just what you want to do. It's also about operationalizing it, and that involves, you know, some exfil transforms and things like that. I will report that Jen and I have had several meetings on the topic. I'm very pleased at the progress that we're making. I was hoping to share some preliminary stuff today. We're not going to have time to do that. We'll make more progress, and maybe we'll, we'll circulate something in a written form before the next meeting. So that's a capital budget and the simplified progress stuff. On the outside contracts, we have made some progress. In fact, I, I think Jen's got to plonar a report. Jen, you've got all about eight minutes to walk us through that, and if you leave me a minute to summarize, I would appreciate it.
You got it. Okay. Do I, oh, you guys can see that, I believe?
Yeah, vendor contracts.
Yeah, so, um, big picture wise, this was kind of a exercise that Craig asked me to do was to take a look at the regular vendors that we pay, sort them. And what I do, I don't want anybody to get too stuck in these numbers here, because you've got a full 12 months here compared to seven months over here. But the things I want to note are that, you know, we're, what we're doing is we're looking at each of these individual contractors. We know that our health insurance premiums have gone up 3.9%, so that's going to be something that we're going to sort through. But we have had changes in the personnel that's on our health insurance plan, so it's not necessarily that we're just going to have automatically a 3.9% increase. But that, you know, that is a big number for us, and so I figure I should point that out. The fees that we pay to the Cottonwood Improvement District, that's for the sewer, those have gone up substantially this year, and so within this current fiscal year. And so we're anticipating those numbers in the new budget. We know that our recycling costs are going to start increasing by a minimum of 3% each year. You all approved a contract last January or last month for the change in funds, our monthly retainer essentially to the Salt Lake County Service Area Number Three from 2,300 a month to 3,000. So I mean, that's almost a 30% increase there, plus the overtime rate increased. And then we've, we're doing more water testing, and those lab tests are costing more, and we anticipate that they're actually going to go up another 5 to 10% before the end of this fiscal year. So these are just some of the big highlights of things that I'm looking at when I'm doing our budgeting. We're going to leave that at that there. When it comes to what Craig is referring to as the simplified reporting, one of the things that we're starting to try and do is allocate staff time better into various programs. And so I did, you know, and this is, you know, these are rough numbers. We're going to start, it's going to be rough at the beginning, but we can hone in on these over time. And so after doing a questionnaire or whatever with the current town administration staff, this is kind of where our numbers aligned. And you're going to see that later on in the next spreadsheet, but we wanted to kind of let you know that there's basically five buckets for the administrative staff of how we're dedicating their time. Financial preparation, general operations, town services and programs, town council, and then land use planning, building zoning, stuff like that. With the Marshals Department, it's a little bit easier, or we just decided that we would look at like the human capital first and just look at the, the cost of our employees, and then the equipment and the various resources, software, trucks, vehicles, all of the things that the Marshals Department needs to be able to get their job done. So these are our initial buckets that we're using in this first round. Oops, went too fast. Okay. This is is the summary page that we've developed. And what I wanna point out that this summary page does is it looks at right now, the town really essentially has four different independent budgets, the general fund, the capital projects fund, water and sewer. This combines everything. And so basically what we did is we went through the GL and we assigned the GL to, and basically each of those accounts to these categories. Oh, you might notice that a lot of these categories are very similar but not exact um, as to how the audit presents the numbers. And Craig and I kinda used that as a starting point. But then we, you know, we discussed it and worked through what we thought would be more informative program-wise, um, for us. I'd love to hear if you guys, I mean, I can read through this list, but we have the revenue section here. The expense down here, we pulled out the transfers. Um, I do wanna point out that, um, this is very much a draft. Um, I still need a bunch of work done on my coding, so don't be stuck on any of the numbers on this page because I think there's some errors that I still need to find. Um, but more importantly, what do you think about these categories? And do you think that this will be helpful for you to make decisions?
Jen, I think given the time constraints that we're under, uh, what I'm gonna suggest is that we, uh, uh, I'm happy to write a sort of cover note on why we're making these changes, you know, what's sort of behind it. And then we can circulate that out to the town council. And I, I think that me, it means that we can get uh, better feedback at the ne- at, at, at our next meeting. But I do wanna reiterate what I said earlier, which is, A, this is hard work. Uh, B, I'm really pleased with the progress we're making. And effectively what this becomes is an overall summary that, that I hope the town council members and the citizens of Alta are gonna find much easier to read, to understand where the money's going. So, uh, with that said, I wanna just also comment on the contract stuff. I had originally expected that the change in the outside contracts would be much larger than it's actually showing up to be. That's for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, well, with the exception of healthcare, which is always a big variance item, and it, it is what it's gonna be. Uh, but I had expected, given, you know, the headline inflation rates that we're seeing uh, in, in the general C- uh, consumer price index that we might be facing, a pretty jarring increase in, in, in projects uh, year on year. Uh, the preliminary stuff that you've been through is some of those price increases already came through in this last fiscal year. So the year-on-year change is not gonna be as big as I thought. Jen also, uh, advised that we, you know, one question we had was, should we reach out to every vendor and just confirm that there's no price change? Her advice was, you know what, that might trigger price change. Let's let the burden be on them. Let's not do that. And the and I think that was actually the right decision. Uh, but I'm caveating it because we might have some increases mid-year next year that, you know, might not necessarily be in the budget as we forecast it. But again, the main headline on the outside contracts is not as jarring as I expected based upon the cola increases that are advertised in the popular press.
Good news. Good news. Anybody else wanna make any, uh, brief closing comments?
One question, what?
Yeah.
One question, why such a big, um, decline in sales tax assumption? It's going from a million eight to a million three?
None of those numbers are what I'm proposing.
Yeah. This, this is not.
I just, this is a ver- there, there's, yeah, there's a lot of, on that previous page, there was a lot, you probably noticed there was a lot of zeros. I have not, we've been trying to get our format worked out, and there's just, and we, I have a series of meetings with various department heads that are coming up, so we were hoping to take this opportunity to at least talk bigger picture about the budget and our process and where we're going, as opposed to like, the next meeting, I hope to have some, some numbers for us to hang our hat on a little bit more.
Yeah.
My bad.
Oh, no, no, I didn't, I meant to point that out, um, specifically, and I didn't, so, thanks for the catch.
Me, John, I, I found it very difficult to think through this without having a rough idea of whether this is a big number or a little number. That's why we put the numbers in there was, was to anchor people in that. But you should read no information content into any projections or anything else on the numbers that are there. It's just to help you visualize it and think through it.
Yeah, I think the formatting is, is a huge improvement. So.
Yeah, it's the software that we got is really cool. It's an Excel document that live connects with our database. Um, and it's, it's been really, really fun to work with. So I'm looking forward to fine tuning it and getting it to a place where you get, makes it easier for you guys to do your job.
Yeah, yeah, indeed. Uh, any other closing final comments, Elise, or the other committee member?
I'm good.
Excuse me, say again?
Oh, no, no more comments. I'm good.
Okay, no, my God, I've got it. Okay. All right, in that case, must we have a motion to adjourn this committee meeting?
Yes, you should.
Okay.
So move.
I move, we adjourn. All right, so move, John. Yes. John and I tied for moving second. Uh, any, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. Uh, now, I would like to call the meeting to order for the, uh, town council, Alta Town Council meeting of, um, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And once again, we are meeting in the absence of a, um, anchor location pursuant to my, uh, February first termination, which is available on the web. Uh, and I just might say that, um, ideally, we would have a, um, a meeting where some could join in this fashion and some could join at an anchor location. That is a hybrid meeting. But we're frankly not equipped to do that yet. And that is, uh, related to the budget discussion we've just had. So we'll see if such facility can be facilitated, uh, next year, depending on what our financial situation is. Uh, okay, uh, let's turn to citizen input. Have we any citizens who would like to speak to us? Or anybody who has submitted a written statement, uh?
I don't believe we received any written statements or, um, request to speak, but if anyone who is here and would like to make a comment, please just raise your hand in Zoom, and I will enable your microphone and video. Not seeing anything. Oh, we do have one. Adrian Ruderman, just give me one moment. Okay, Adrian, you should be able to enable your microphone video now if you'd like.
Yeah. Hi, this is Dan Katner talking. Hi, everybody. Um, I would like to have, uh, you consider the town that is considered taking over the Alta Resort Shuttle and the night shuttle and, uh, the, uh, the other one, which is the UTA supplement shuttle, uh. Adrian and I have been doing it for a long time, and I, I think we're uh, getting pretty tapped out and also would enable, uh, I think the town would be able to get grants. Uh, you know, we're, we're not able to do that. I know I've talked to Chris, Chris about it, and, uh, is this something you guys would be willing to take a look at?
Well, I think the answer is, uh, you're right, uh, on schedule, Dan. This is since we're starting to talk about, uh, budget for next year. This is something we should, uh, indeed take a, take a look at. Um, I, I hope that anybody could do as well as you have already done, uh, which is really terrific. I mean, you rose the occasion, you came up with a, um, a system that works, um, it to, the, the, more than the satisfaction, to the delight of many. So, uh, you're a very hard act to follow. Uh, that said, uh, I can understand I get, um, burned out at this sort of thing.
Well, I'd be happy to help in whatever way I could, uh, during the transition, but, uh, uh, you know, I think there's just other avenues out there for, uh, pursuing funding. And, uh, maybe that could be a good discussion. Uh, we talked to John Byrne about possibly, uh, doing a non-for-profit arrangement. He, he has some skill in this area, as I'm sure some of you others do. And that was one thought.
Okay. Good. Okay. Um, let's see, are there any other, uh, uh, citizens who would like to speak?
Not seeing anything.
Not seeing anything, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, Friends of Alta, and I hope that, uh, Cody is available, Cody or Tara, or anybody, someone else representing FOA?
Uh, Tara's here. I'm just sending her over to the panelist's side, so she should be joining us at the moment.
Can you see me or hear me?
We can.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council for allowing me the time to give an update. Uh, my name is Tara Moore, and I'm the operations manager for Friends of Alta, for those who don't know. Um, so a little update on what we're doing. Cody took part in a KUTV segment today on the Fresh Living with Sydney Stephenson. Um, it aired today, I believe, at one PM. If you haven't seen it, um, it was really informative. Um, and some of you may realize at the town that there is some various bird studies going on. So we're actually in the fifth year of the Black Rosie Finch Study, which is extremely exciting. Um, the goal of the Black Rosie Finch Study is to get a measure of the Black Rosie Finch population in Little Cottonwood Canyon, and that's conducted by the Department of Wildlife Resources. Um, we also recently hired Joe Pyra with Seago Strategies to monitor the legislative session this year. So that's something all new that we're doing this year. Um, his main goal is to be keeping an eye out on gondola, um, proposals or any kind of changes regarding that. He also monitored the HB two seventy-six proposal by Rep. Phil Lyman. Um, for those of you who don't know about that one, uh, it was, this legislature would have required Salt Lake Public Utilities to either supply water to the dry lots in Albion Basin or purchase them at their fair market value. So the good news is, the bill was actually held into committee this year, so it's effectively ending it for this season. But we are gonna keep an eye on, on, out on it just in case it comes up in the interim. Um, and then we are, of course, continually actively working with various nonprofits in the valley and businesses, monitoring the gondola and hopefully trying to educate the general population more about it and our stance on it. I'm sure some of you are aware of what our stance is regarding that. Um, so we are currently actively doing that. And then we are also preparing for our seventeenth annual Alta Gala with AS and Alta Historical Society. So that one's going on April seventh, and it's gonna be at Snow Pine this year again, like it was last year. Um, tickets will be going on self February fifteenth at noon. So mark your calendars. We do anticipate them selling out again this year. I believe last year we sold out within twenty-four hours, I think maybe within sixteen hours. So we do expect the same kind of sellout as well. So mark those calendars. Um, other things we are up to, we are actually preparing some three new events that we're hopefully gonna be able to launch this year. Um, there are gonna be various events throughout the summer, so we're hoping to do a mine and water treatment tour. Um, we're also gonna be doing an easement tour of our easements, so people can see the various easements that we have and why it's important to have easements and um, throughout Albion Basin. So conservation easements, I should clarify that. Um, we are also looking at our first Founder's Day. So FOA was founded in nineteen eighty-one, so we're hoping to kind of have something to celebrate our Founder's Day in sometime, maybe in August, we'll see. And then we also have our various events that we're gonna be doing and participating in throughout the year, so such as Alta Earth Day, Wildfire Festival, Kids' Day, um, Memorial Tree Planting. And then we're also hoping to still continue forward with our star party that we did last year. If you were able to attend it, it was an amazing time. It was a little cold, so we'll see if we're gonna still do it at the same time this year or not. Um, and then, yeah, we're gonna do our Latino outdoor, um, co- co-host hike as well in the fall. So that was a really fast-paced what we're up to, but do you have any questions or anything?
Yeah, I thought the star party was terrific, and I wonder if you could arrange to have, uh, Saturn up at the same time as the star party that you did last year? Because it was really impressive.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely for you. Yeah, we'll keep you posted. Um, all of our events, we posted on our social medias and on our newsletters. We do do bi-weekly newsletters. If you haven't registered for that, it's just simple news articles that we think are pertinent for Little Cottonwood Canyon.
Thank you for the presentation. Has Friends of Alta purchased any land in Albion Basin recently?
No, no, we haven't. We have actually got a notification from someone that's interested in selling it. Um, it's not an Albion Basin, it's more so by Snowbird. Um, they're coming to us first before they sell it, so we'll see, depending on cost and everything, if that's something we'll be interested in doing.
And has that been pretty true for the past few years with raising real estate prices? Had, have there been any in the past, like, three years, purchases in the basin? Okay.
Not for us. But we're definitely interested. If anybody knows of any property for sale, let us know.
Okay, any other questions on, uh, for Tara? Um, let's see, you ran through a bunch of stuff in a very big hurry.
Got a little nervous, I think, so.
Yeah, this, uh, is mine and water treatment tour. Um, talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so, um, we still, we worked it out with Keith, um, Hanson. Um, I heard that he's actually leaving, so we're gonna have to talk to the new person that's taking over. Um, he's the GM of Salt Lake County Service Area Three. Um, so, huh?
Casey is his name.
Oh, okay.
Is his name, yeah.
Okay, so we worked it out with him. Um, he did do a tour for us previously, and it was just with our board members. Um, we can have up to ten individuals for this tour is what he said. Um, and it'll be a tour of the water treatment facility first. And then you wa- wander up to Alta, and you actually go through some of those mines up there and kinda see it, um, that.
So this is not just Bay City Mine, this is other, other places?
Um, you know, I can't remember the name off the top of my head. It's, I think it's just Bay City Mine, but for some reason, Emma's sticking in my head. It's the one um, right by Snow Pine area up there. Yeah, is that Bay City? Okay, so yes, that mine. I mean, we're still working out the details on this, so I know some from when we did it previously. Uh, but yeah, so we'll have up to ten people for that one. We're still trying to decide how we're gonna target people for that, if we're just gonna have, try and sell tickets to raise money or, um, just more of a thank you to some of our high donors as well. So we're still working out all those details. And of course, it depends if the person who's taking over for him, um, would be willing to do that as well.
Right, and the water treatment tour?
Yeah, so that's by Snowbird, so the water treatment.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, all right. All right. Alright, or let's see, Carolyn has her hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that we, um, Keith was very generous to the Snowbird ski team. And we had great success with several raises, and we bid it up to a certain point. And then um, he agreed to do another one, so we actually were able to get it bid up to. I think it was like, if I remember correctly, seventy-five hundred, eighty-five hundred, something like that. And then us, and then some, then we agreed to have another one, so that's just a strategy. That may or may not work well in that room.
Awesome, thank you for that. Yeah, he mentioned he's done something like that, so it must have been your organization.
Yes, yes, I've I've been on several of his tours, which are absolutely phenomenal and 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 really wonderful. And um, uh, we we actually did something called, uh, Where Does Our Water Come From? And um, we had an informational gathering for children at the water treatment plant. Uh, and uh, that was a big seller as well. And then the mine tour across from the Snow Pine, because they were both very different and very interesting, but you may. Appeal to some with a Where Does Our Water Come From Party?
Oh, that's a good idea, thank you.
For those of you who have not ever participated in the. The mine tour, uh, the Bay City Mine Tour, it is really worth your time. And what my only recommendation is dress warmly and wear um. How should I put it? Uh, water waterproof boots, because it's kind of sloppy in there, but man, it's really interesting.
Yeah, that's kind of why we're hoping to maybe do it maybe July. Just hopefully it's not as cold. It's still gonna be cold, but.
Thing is, that 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 tunnel is forty-five degrees year round.
Oh, yeah.
So uh, it don't 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 think that waiting is gonna get it warmer. Um, okay, any other questions uh, for our friends? Uh, Friends of Alta? Okay, thank you very much, Tara. That's helpful. Uh, let's turn now to the Resort Shuttle, Town Shuttle, Night Shuttle. Shuttle updates, Tom, I think I saw Tom a moment ago, yeah, go. You're, I'll start off by saying. Your numbers are very impressive.
Mayor, may I just interject before Tom gets started?
Sure.
So I did communicate with Tom about this, um. You know, Tom provided, I think on Friday, Tom provided some January ridership metals uh, numbers. Across the um. Across the three different kind of slices of the shuttle program. Uh. And then I also have some updated information on shuttle, kind of shuttle. Contributions and pledges and financial information. Um, kind of worked up into a spreadsheet that um, I discussed with Tom putting on the screen, so it's a little bit easier for the council to. Kind of grasp.
Do it. So, uh, is it the idea that, okay, so you're sharing the screen and Tom's gonna talk, is that the idea?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm here now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I had a little difficulty. Um. So if you look at the top of that chart, in January alone. Eleven thousand eight hundred seven people rode the three shuttles. Um, the three shuttles are the new UTA supplemental service from seven AM to six PM. The traditional Alta Resort Shuttle, which goes from eight fifteen to five fifteen, and then the Night Shuttle. So there's three different shuttles running every day. Um, and eleven thousand eight hundred seven in January, we're gonna have forty, fifty thousand people ride these shuttles. This year. And um, the 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 thing I need to emphasize is that it's not sustainable. The way it's managed and run right now. Um, Dan and Adrian have uh, for years have kept their one resort shuttle going. There's fourteen different sources of funding for the resort shuttle that Dan and Adrian, on their own time, have rounded up. Solicited the money, got payment. Um, now there's six more sources for the Night Shuttle and nine sources for the Town Shuttle. So um. Uh, and just as an example, the the Town Shuttle money runs out, just if everybody pays what they've said they're gonna pay. Which we just are crossing our fingers, everybody pays. That only goes till April sixth, based on what's been funded so far. Um, the the UTA service is supposed to go to April fifteenth, so. We're still uh, nine days short of keeping that going till the end, and at some point it just will have to stop. But I'm not comfortable going to everybody and saying, give us more money. That's not a role I want to be in. Um, so that's why I'm I'm throwing out that uh. Somehow there needs to be a new plan. Visit Salt Lake is not gonna contribute twenty-five thousand next year, which I think uh, they've already said. Uh, I don't know if UTA is gonna give fifty thousand again next year. Um, if it is gonna run again next year, and 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 I don't know what those fifty thousand passengers are gonna do next year if it's not running. But uh, for us to run it again next year, if we're even able to do it, we need to buy another shuttle bus. Um, you have to have three shuttle buses minimum to run it, because for example, one's down for repairs right now. The one that's replacing it right now, if you ride it, you'll realize it's on its last leg. So we need to get another one. I can't buy another one if I don't know it's gonna be funded, so. Um, I know I'm supposed to be know being more optimistic, you give a presentation of how great the Town Shuttle is running and everything, but. I'm trying to give a warning that uh, something needs to happen to fund it and support it if it's gonna keep going. Um, so I'm open for questions. I'll I'll add, I'll add one more thing, is those numbers are even, not this, not I want to bring up another subject, but those numbers would be a lot higher. If two or three days every week, the shuttle can't even operate between three and five thirty, because it literally can't move. Um, our office is extremely tired of people calling saying, when's the shuttle gonna get here? When's the shuttle gonna get here? And us having to explain that, well, it can't get to you, because the road doesn't move. And if the shuttle's in Gold Miners Parking Lot, it's gonna be an hour and a half until it gets to the Cliff Lodge. And that's, that's another issue, but those numbers would be higher if that wasn't an issue, because a lot of people can't even get on the shuttle two or three days a week.
And that's because of the the uh, road congestion or because you filled up the vans?
No, no, the road congestion is the the vet. If you're in the Gold Miners Parking Lot, if you are on Gold Miners Parking Lot, starting at two forty-five Sunday. It took an hour and a half just to get out of the Gold Miners Parking Lot. And that, that, that's a whole nother issue, that's not really the resort shuttle issue, but when when Snowbird, when Snowbird. Empties their parking lots, Alta doesn't move. And so literally, the shuttle bus can't get from Albion to Cliff in less than an hour and a half, because the road doesn't. The traffic does not move.
Got it.
Tom, how much more difficult do you think it is to run the shuttle? Speaking of running down to Snowbird, like what if, what if that was not part of the mix?
Well, that's the whole point of the new, the town, it doesn't go down to, doesn't go down to Silver Center. It only goes to the Cliff Lodge, and that's the loop that it's replacing UTA for, since UTA doesn't come up the bypass road anymore. The Town Shuttle, the new shuttle, that's the whole purpose of it. Is to serve from the Cliff Lodge bus stop up to Albion, all the stops that the UTA no longer serves.
And yeah, I guess I thought. The emphasis was a little bit more on gold miners up to Albion, but I'm hearing, I'm hearing the fuller picture now.
Yeah, if you look at the numbers, um. In January, uh. Two thousand twelve people were picked up at the Gold Miners Parking Lot. Twelve hundred and fifty-five were picked up at the Cliff Lodge bus stop. So that's turned into a huge demand, because the UTA bus doesn't serve that anymore. And that's the only reason Snowbirds contribute, that's gets to the whole problem is, we have to get all these people to contribute. Snowbirds only contributing if we serve that bus stop. Peruvians only contributing if in the morning we drive into their parking lot. Um, so there's, you know, all these conditions of how, of why people will contribute. And so I I'm I'm crossing my fingers, someone comes up with a plan, I don't know if you want to address uh, having a. A a tax for transportation, I mean, Park City funds a shuttle service for free, across the whole, whole town of Park City. I I'm not sure if someone's gonna suggest that Alta. Takes that on. But at some point, something's gonna have to change.
Okay. Um, yeah, we got that, and what is very clear is it's, this is, there's a huge demand. And you got um, more, almost twelve thousand people just in one month.
In one month.
Riders on, yeah, so that's. That's phenomenal. I wonder how many riders there have been on UTA in one month.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Carolyn, you have your hand up.
I do, from a fairness perspective, uh, looking at where um, funds have been able to be. Um, obtained from Powder Ridge, um, has um, paid four thousand dollars. And they have one of the lower um, usages of the shuttle. Whereas you have several. The Provenance Estates Blackjack as much heavier utilizers, and they are funding at about half the rate. Of um, Powder Ridge. And they are using it. About twice as much, maybe even more.
What you're saying? Uh, you're, I mean, you're, basically, you're saying that the funding is not correlated with the usage.
Correct, and it's not, it's it's frankly, it's not fair, and I don't know if um, the um. Like, if I, you know, knew that everybody else had given. Four thousand dollars, and I was using it that much, I would say, well, geez, that that that's not fair, that Powder Ridge is. Paying for Blackjack, you know? And similarly, you know, Snowbird is contributing. You know, a small amount, considering it's Snowbird, and Powder Ridge is just like fifteen. Units, you know?
Yeah.
Let me just address that, that that's what Carolyn's bringing up is the whole problem, is how this is funded. Um, uh, it's not sustainable. For example, we don't have enough money to fund it. Some of the places. Aren't gonna pay anymore. They flat out said they're not gonna pay anymore, so how do you go to everyone else and say, well, you gotta pay more, even though they're not gonna pay more? And that's fourteen different entities, just for the traditional resort shuttle, not counting all the entities that pay for the other, so. The whole equity issue, who pays for it? The town just needs to take it over and levy a tax or do whatever is necessary. So we're not trying to, I I'm not comfortable soliciting money from people. I don't want to go to all these organizations, hey, you gotta give me more money, you gotta give me more money. I'm not comfortable doing that. Um, so I'm hoping somebody comes up with a good idea and takes over.
Tom, can you just, um, maybe you're not prepared to, but if you can, speak a little bit. To um, the way that the shares were uh, originally broken out, that were sort of assessed to the lodging. Or the residential properties that uh, pledged to the shuttle.
Dan and Adrian would have to, that goes back fifteen years, based on number of units, but. That would be before my time. Now, so I don't know.
I'd like to point out, um, that Adrian Ruderman is an attendee, and she has raised her hand if we want to hear from her directly.
Yes.
Or or Dan?
Yes.
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead, Dan or Adrian, whoever's, I think it's Dan.
Yeah, no, they're just in the process of getting moved over.
Okay, there.
Hi, this is Adrian, so to clarify a couple of things on these spreadsheets. Um, where Carolyn was seeing the Snowbird contribution, that's solely for the Night Shuttle. That's not for the Day Shuttle. Um, the UTA kind of extension shuttle that Tom was referring to. Has independent funding of of what you're looking at here. The Resort Shuttle, which is sort of our traditional shuttle that services all of the places on the bypass road. Is the upper spreadsheet, so that's, there's the UTA shuttle that has the more extended time. The Resort Shuttle that runs, I think, from eight thirty to five, and then the Night Shuttle, so there are three different shuttles. Um, and Dan can speak to the, you know, distribution, but the way that um. The shares were were figured out were by the number of beds. At particular properties, so it was, they looked at the properties, how many beds they had, and that was how they. They distributed the the shares. Do you want to answer that, Dan?
And that's right, uh, we came up with a, there's essentially twenty-two shares. And and that's how, uh, without the ski lifts, I believe they pay for ten shares. And so the other ten, the other twelve shares are split up with various properties, uh, depending on how many beds, or thus, how many people.
And the Resort Shuttle does not service Snowbird. The UTA Shuttle services Snowbird. This Resort Shuttle does not service Snowbird.
But, that's right.
Any other questions? Did that help to clarify?
Uh, well, John Byrne had a square hand up.
Yeah, yeah, just before we fall into the panacea of the town. Can just take this over. I think the execution of this would be really a strain for the town, um, at least at today's staffing levels. Uh, maybe the new GM will have some magic wand to wave, but I think a more, um, it, I think it. I started the shuttle in Girdwood and uh, and we ended up having to run it at, the skier ended up having to run for about five years. Until finally, we were able to form a five oh one C three. And take it over, but. We paid a dollar every ride. Hotel guests, employees, anybody that got on it at one of our bus stops. The clicker went, and we ended up paying a dollar a ride for it, so, you know, there was a lot of commitment behind it. Um, and it was somewhat a different, different thing, because the shuttle in Girdwood, you know, actually reached out to where employee housing was. And when the employees were actually living, and so, you know, there were just a lot of collateral benefits. For Alta to take it over, I think would be very tough. To run it ourselves, but, you know, maybe the viable thing would be to try to find somebody to run it for us on a for-profit basis. Um, and and maybe our role could just be organizing the finances of that and letting a contract or something. But I just don't see our town staff taking over actually. All the administration and operation of this, uh, it's just beyond our our current staff. My opinion.
No, I think the town needs to take over funding and and. And providing the funding to whoever runs it. Whether it's us, and we're glad to let someone else run it, um, but somebody, whoever runs it. Uh, should just be running the shuttle and not be soliciting for the money. That should be the government's job to come up with the money to pay a contractor to do it.
Thank you for that clarification. So you're still willing to run it? And and hire the drivers and maintain the vehicles and all that side of it, you just want us to take over the funding?
Uh, yes, and I would need, and 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 it needs to be done soon, because we we, like I said, we need to buy another, those vans are hard to find. A new one's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, so, and they need to be purchased in April for the next winter. Um, so if we were gonna do it again next year, uh, we would need to know soon how that's gonna be funded, who's gonna? Be in charge of the money.
Well, you're being very gracious, because um, actually operating the thing is the harder end of the bargain, so.
Uh, yes.
You know, you're you're being gracious in that regard, giving us the easy side, but um, we'll have to see what we can do.
Carolyn, did you want to say something?
I I just um, really appreciate John's comment about um, considering um, how this might be funded. With charging individuals to ride, I think that although the um, bed allocation. As a method of determining usage was meant to be fair, and I can understand why it's fair. It it clearly is not fair, because um, the number of rides, you know, put out by Powder Ridge. Is significantly less than the other institutions, so. Bed usage is is not a good way to go about this, and, you know, having people. Buy a pass for the week that they're here, having, you know, somehow an individual ride cost things. I mean, everybody has Venmo or some kind of way to pay on their phone now, or a pass or something, but I would like to see this. You know, us not soliciting, um. You know, individual funding from. Uh, institutions that are not. you know, individual funding from, uh, institutions that are not using it, such as Powder Ridge.
Which, which is the whole problem because, um, we, for example, if we had to charge every passenger that got on board, we wouldn't do it. That would just be a headache for us to try to manage that. Um, uh, so we wouldn't do it. Um, I don't think anyone would want to do that. Um, but, but that's one alternative. Um, but what, what's Carol bringing up is the whole problem with the whole funding source and the equity of it and how it's funded. So that's why it needs to be addressed.
Okay. Any other? Excuse me, any other, um, questions, comments?
I guess I feel like I'm missing something obvious. The two major business beneficiaries to the shuttles are Alta Ski Lift Area and Snowbird. So I'm not sure why, you know, their ancillary beneficiaries, the people that are renting their homes or uh, different places to stay in town, but the primary businesses that are benefiting are the, the two ski areas in town. So I'm not sure why they wouldn't be the first people that should step up and, and pay for this.
Well, I know Snowbird doesn't want to pay for it because they feel like it's taking people away from Snowbird and bringing them to Alta. So I know that's Dave Field's position. Yeah.
It's, it's, I would say largely true, Sheridan, but I also believe that the, um, if the lodges are excuse me, getting outside guests for meals, they're beneficiaries as well. And, uh, if you scroll up, who, who's, let's see, who's running the spreadsheet? Is, is it, uh, Chris? If you'll scroll up to see the, um, where the destinations and origin destinations are.
And so this origin and destination information is just for the night shuttle.
Uh huh.
So that's, I believe that, that this information, that Alta Shuttle is only collecting this information for the night shuttle because it's really the only service in which it's sort of practical to, to keep track of that information.
Just that is, that is correct. That shows where the night shut, between six and 10 o'clock where we pick people up at.
It's, um, interesting to me that you pick up 425 people at the cliff and deliver 511 back. Where, where the rest of them go. That's, uh, and similarly with these other mismatches, uh, Blackjack, so forth. I would, uh, what? What happens? Uh, can you explain that a little bit more, um, Tom?
It's gonna match. Some are skiers. Some will be skiers at one resort or the other that stayed after six o'clock and had a beer or whatever and came back and didn't necessarily come down one way or the other.
Got it. Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, well, you've, uh, defined the problem very well. And, and now it's kind of like, uh, this is the wages of success, that, uh, this is clearly a successful program with 12,000 riders in one month. And I presume you haven't seen any falloff this month.
No, not at all. Yeah, that's why by the end of the season, it'll be 40, 50,000 people that rode the three shuttles. And again, I don't want to be, uh, pessimist here, but I don't know what those 50,000 people are gonna do next year if it's not running, and it won't be running if, if there's, if somebody doesn't take charge to, to fund it.
Yeah, got it.
What, what is the funding ask? Uh, how much, what is the number that, that we should have in our mind here as, as we move on?
To run all three shuttles?
Yeah, the total amount of money would take the, the service this year has been great. So let's just start with that and say, if we wanted to have the same service next year, how much would it be?
Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Wow. That would equal roughly 10% of our town budget.
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's gonna be a tough number for us to come up with on our own. We're gonna have to find other people.
Yep.
Or you're gonna have to charge people to ride it, you know, and bypass.
Five bucks, it's like five bucks a ride, right?
Yes. Yeah, something needs to happen. I understand that that would slow down your operations, but, um, the, the, the service has been fantastic, okay? But the, about the five times that we just tried to use it for house guests, it didn't work. Like, nobody showed up. They called the driver again. The driver said, oh, I forgot about you. Oh, I got busy. It had nothing to do with the traffic flow. It wasn't a traffic flow issue. It was a being overwhelmed issue, much like we're all really busy right now. So, um, we had trouble getting back and forth to the cliff with that, without traffic, just forgetting people. So I don't know if the service needs to be increased because it is a great service when you want to use it. But all of our house guests would be happy to pay for that. So I, I, I'd like to see some kind of individual payment form for it.
Okay.
Craig, you wanted to say something?
Y-yes, I did. Uh, with my budget hat on, I, this is a confusing topic. And I just want to make sure I understand, uh, what Tom is saying. Uh, but first, before I say that is, is I've heard lots of good comments about the shuttle service as it's being, uh, currently run. But I think what you're saying is historically, this was a non-governmental community volunteer, uh, program that it was, that was funded by volunteer, uh, donations. That, that is no longer viable for a couple of reasons. One, the demand is growing significantly in large part because of UDOT's failures. Uh, but also just probably general growth in the ski area and that you as a supplier can, can no longer continue to run this as a non-governmental activity. So you're formally asking us as a town of Alta to take this, to take over the funding component of this. And on the funding component, what I'm a little confused about is the difference between the seventy, seventy-nine thousand dollar, you know, uh, look that I'm looking at now and the 220, uh, number that you just cited. Is that due to, is some of that due to CapEx expenditures that you have to make?
The 78,000 is just for the town, the, the resort shuttle. Um, the one that runs from eight fifteen to five fifteen. Uh, the one that runs from seven AM to six PM, well, actually from six forty-five to from six forty-five AM to six PM, that's, that is still short. It needs 110,000 to run that for 127 days of the year. And then the night shuttle is 32,000 and change to run that 100 and 100 and uh, some odd days a year. So that
I think in order to, I, I hear the ask and I understand why you need to make it. I think it would help a lot if you could just supply the, sort of the breakdown of the individual, uh, components so that the town can consider in their budget. But as John already pro-offered, 220 is a lot for the size, you know, for our current budget. So that's gonna be something they're gonna have to wrestle with.
I can just, just real quickly, maybe people hear that and they think, oh, wow, that's a lot of money. So just the gas alone this year is gonna be about 25,000 dollars, just the gas. Um, uh, payroll, payroll taxes, payroll expenses for six drivers. I mean, that's gonna be 40,000, 45,000 dollars. Um, um, uh, you know, commercial auto insurance, uh, repairs, snow tires, car washes, ski racks. I mean, yeah, I mean, I can break all that down. Uh, pretty easily, but you'll be surprised how fast that adds up.
I'm not doubting your numbers. It's just easier to see them on paper.
Yeah, yeah.
And Tom, that, that doesn't include the purchase of the new vehicle, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's essentially no depreciation in there.
Right.
Okay, uh, this, uh,
Roger, can I just throw one more thing out? And I, I, I encouraged this last April to get bids from other companies. And at that time, the only companies that bid, I think, were Canyon Transportation and Alpine. Um, and they were basically the same as what we were saying we needed to run. I, I think Snow Country is another player, player that might be in since they're running the, the Thursday through Sunday and they're actually charging people. Um, that, that might be who to go to, uh, as someone else that might want to take this over and run it since they're already doing it from the valley and they're charging people. They've got a system set up to charge people. Um, but again, someone needs to, someone needs to step up and do that and, and and solicit bids and get someone else to run it because, because I want the service to continue. I, I don't necessarily want to do it. I do want someone to do it though. Um, so, so that's kind of what someone needs to take, take, take charge and make sure it runs because it, it won't be us.
Got it. Hey, Craig, you want to say something more?
Nope.
Okay, pat down. Um, all right, we're, thank, uh, it's been a hugely successful program in almost all respects, so. Um, congratulations. And, um, and thanks for the report. Um, let's move on to, uh, Brandon and, um, ACBB.
Hello, Mayor. Hi, town, Alta Town Council. Really, uh, great to see everyone. Chris, thanks for putting this up and do a little driving here, so. Um, so my name is Brandon Ott. I'm the Marketing Director at Alta Ski Area and also the, um, President of the Alta Chamber, for those of you who I have not met. Um, wanted to just take this time and share a little bit as to what the heck the Alta Chamber's been up to. I think we, we presented to this group back in July. Um, when they're, before the fi- 473 inches of snow had fallen up here, so. Um, yeah, let's, uh, let's jump on into it, Chris. So kind of here's the, the rough outline. Um, I'll, I'm gonna dive through and provide some updates as to Alta Chamber, Visitors Bureau, Visitors Bureau programming. And then, uh, Chris will, um, provide some further, uh, color on the, on the funding and, and current fiscal year. So, yeah. Um, hey, we'll get to continue a little bit of conversation around the Alta Shuttle. Um, looking forward to touching upon that, our Time Well Spent Campaign, membership, and then our financial report. So, as a reminder, let's head to the next one, Chris. So as a reminder, um, it's always good to share our values and mission statement. So Alta Chamber and Visitors Bureau promotes Alta and Little Cotman Canyon as a world-class, year-round mountain resort destination. Seeks to enhance the Alta experience for locals and destination visitors. I really want to underscore that last, that last line there, seeking to enhance the Alta experience for locals and destination visitors. We, uh, rewrote the mission statement a few years ago, um, putting further emphasis on, on the enhancement of the experience rather than just attracting more and more people. Um, AZ, ACBB functions as a, as a partnership between the public entity of the town of Alta and the Alta Business Community. Program areas, destination marketing, community-guided visitor information, that again was a little bit of a rewrite through our, um, you know, through the efforts of our board. Membership services, public art and place making, and, uh, our ongoing robust relationship with ACE to help carry out programs. So our board consists of next slide, Chris?
Yeah, sorry.
So, again, myself as a market, um, president, um, these, these, uh, turned over this past July. Um, Vice President Zach Coleman, many of you know, General Manager at Gold Miner's Daughter, um, Treasurer. Your very own Chris Colley, and then Secretary Connie Marshall, representing Our Lady of the Snows. So, um, yeah, membership, you know, we're a membership-based organization. So we currently have 22 members. Um, in 2002 fiscal year, uh, three members declined to continue participation. Um, one of which was Canyon Transportation. I just want to bring a little bit of, um, background to this. And, you know, speaking with Melanie, you know, the why, why, why are you not continuing your membership? And it's really not having the bandwidth and the time to get value out of, out of the ACBB. Um, we did have two new businesses that did, that joined. So Alta Children's Center. Um, also is very involved in a dynamic, um, business and, and resource up here. And then also Wasatch Ski Storage as well. So, um, all active members did pay dues in 2022. It's a important mechanic of a membership-based organization. And then, uh, we will send out 2023 due invoices. We'll, we'll go out this month.
And, and those dues are, are they the same for everybody?
Yeah, so, um, those dues are prorated based on the business size, Mayor, so um, number of beds, so on and so forth. Um, let's see, Chris, you skipped one slide.
Uh, that, I can, uh,
Did you? Yep, yep, you just missed one. Yep, okay, so we, you know, we, we've talked about this quite a bit, but, um, you know, the, the Alta Chamber and the board, you know, have been very active in conversations with Tom and, and Adrian and Dan, you know, early on, early in the summer. Actually, no, last spring when Tom, you know, kind of brought it, brought to all of us, you know, rising costs and, and challenges with the ongoing, ongoing solution, transportation solutions that he's spoken a lot of, you know, in detail about today. So you know, early on, we applied for funding with the Utah Office of Tourism, um, further funding for the Resort Shuttle. We were a little surprised. We did not receive funding. Um, we can provide more information on that another time. Um, so the second bullet point here, uh, you know, continuing to work with and, and find a solution with the Resort Shuttle. One of the things that, you know, it's been mentioned already with UTA and the reduction in service is that put our community and, and Tom in, in a tough spot, right? So we already are facing rising costs. We have reduced services. What the heck are we gonna do? Um, and, and it really required a, uh, an entire community effort. I'd like to think that the Chamber helped, helped facilitate that process along the way, um, in getting these partners together. Um, in terms of a monetary contribution, we contributed 25,000 dollars towards the Alta Resort Shuttle. And then we've been, when we've worked over the years and again over the summer with, uh, Visit Salt Lake directly to really help facilitate and, and ensure that that 25,000 dollar funding was gonna contribute, gonna continue to be in place for the night shuttle only. Um, worked with Snowbird directly. Got a little bit of money, you know, out of Snowbird, but again, it's nice to have, have them, um, you know, contribute toward, towards the night shuttle. All of which, you know, we need to look at and, uh, and, and find another pathway moving forward. But this is how we have arrived to the myriad transportation solutions in place in Upper, Upper Little Cotman Canyon. So, next, next slide here, just a little, this is just a little bit of, uh, some awareness locally. This is, uh, created by Sarah Gibbs and through our partnership with ACE. And this is just, you know, communicating all the, the different shuttle options because all of us who, who live here and work here and everything else, it's confusing to know which is which. So we are trying to, you know, um, provide the different lanes for, for what each of these, uh, shuttles provide, when they come, who they service, so on and so forth. So, so on and so forth. All right, next slide. So, a high-level view of ACBB's marketing efforts and initiatives. Um, this is our, our main, our main program is Time Well Spent. You've heard me speak, speak to this in the past. Uh, campaign goals to help visitors discover and connect with Alta during the quieter, non-peak times throughout our four seasons. Still does have, you know, impactor in the four seasons. Time was spent, spent welcoming visitors while supporting the local economy. Some of our advertising channels, Open Snow, Ski Utah. Um, we had a really, really neat podcast set, uh, placement through Ski Utah. And I want to read just this really quick little soundbite that I thought, uh, really captured the essence of this and, and, and hopefully represented all of us, you know, our, our community really well. So, create a memorable, memorable visit to Alta this winter and enhance that feeling of time well spent by immersing yourself in the Alta community at some of our local by immersing yourself in the Alta community at some of our local events. Join us for Burning on Skis, Saloon Nights, local live music, or attending unique community events like Mountain Film on tour. Alta is, is not just a ski area. Many come for the skiing only to discover a community and then go to altacommunity.org for more information. So again, it's that enhancement in the visitor economy or in the visitor experience and the local economy. Um, we, we, uh, this, uh, this winter, this fall and winter, we've sent out 62,000 emails. Uh, under the sort of the Time Well Spent moniker, uh, receiving over a 50% open rate. That's, that's pretty fantastic. Uh, trends, uh, consumerism trends within travel and tourism. Uh, open rate averages are around 30 to 36%. So, you know, that's telling me we're delivering content that people are excited about. Um, and then where is all this going? Where, you know, where do people find more? It's this, it's this landing page on, uh, on ACE, you know, now it's community.org, org. It's the third most visited page, you know, within their website. And you'll get to see in the next slide here. That's a, that's just a snapshot of the Time Well Spent landing page. Okay, next slide, Chris. So this next slide shows, you know, the dedicated email blast, um, e-newsletter that was sent to the Ski Utah audiences. And, uh, you know, I don't know if you can see these numbers very well, but, um, this one, you know, that open rate of almost 50%, 53,000, um, email sends. And just, just some, you know, this is that, this is, this is content highlighting, you know, some of, some of the, the events. Early in the season, torchlight, of course, but, uh, just displaying more of what, what time well spent means. So now we talk a little bit about placemaking and, and the, and the arts and events. Uh, this is a, this is a fantastic slide. Just had to sneak this in here a little, Sarah. In a, you know, in the bus stop here with, and, you know, just totally surrounded by all the beautiful snow from this year. Um, we, we mentioned that there was a town flag created this summer. Partnership with ACE and Alta Community Enrichment. And this is, uh, quite literally waving that flag in, in one of the, one of the bus stops here. So this next slide here shows, you know, through the funding that, that ACE receives on behalf of the Chamber, you know, what we're, and Sarah will tell you all day long, what she's able to attract a higher level of, you know, um, of events through higher level of content. Um, presenters and just more, uh, engaging, interesting presentations. And many of you, I'm sure, were at this event. This was, uh, in November. Um, totally sold out. Um, you know, highlighting, you know, of course, our current, current challenges around Great Salt Lake. And it was, uh, talking about evaporation and, you know, all, all the many parts of the watershed that were, that were part of. So there was a, a dance, interpretive dance component as well, as you can see here. Next slide, Chris. Oh yeah. Okay. So, um, Chris is going to dive into the numbers. Any questions on any of the programming or some of those marketing, marketing pieces before we dive into the, the budget here? Okay, fantastic. Chris, take it ahead. Take it away.
Okay, so, um, we last, uh, made a presentation to the Town Council about the Chamber in July. This budget, uh, is, um, basically the budget that we presented in July. Um, with one important change that I'll mention in a moment. You know, these are the kind of top level, uh, uh, accounts in our budget. Um, you know, our revenue typically comes from two sources, uh, member dues and then a contribution from the town. You can see that we have a third category in our, um, revenue section called Reserve Funds. Um, and I'll speak about that in a moment. Uh, and then in our expenses, we have our expenses broken down essentially into our four program areas, destination marketing, member listings, visitor information, member services and events, and then public art and events. And then, uh, administration is where we pay for things like, uh, our bookkeeping, a QuickBooks subscription, uh, the services of a CPA to do a financial statement and a tax return. Um, and other kind of incidental type, uh, expenses to run the organization. So, uh, $19,962 in membership dues. $31,500 antenna vulture contribution. On the expense side, $7,250 in administration, uh, $17,000 in destination marketing. Uh, $5,400 and $5,405 in member listings and visitor information. I'll jump to the bottom, $12,075 in public art and events. Member services in our original budget for the year was about $5,000, uh, or actually about $6,000. And member services is where we pay for, member events primarily. But as of our, as of, uh, the time when we were creating our budget for the fiscal year, we knew we were interested in making a contribution to the shuttle. Uh, in the fall, when, um, you, you know, we had, when shuttle program partners had, had done what they could to round up additional contributions to the shuttle to cover the shortfall, which at that time was, more than half of the cost of the Resort Shuttle program. The Chamber discussed and agreed to contribute an additional roughly $19,000. So, uh, like Brandon mentioned earlier, the Chamber's total contribution to the Resort Shuttle program, this year is $25,000. So, um, the changes here are an additional $25,000 in member services and events. Um, that increased, uh, that increased the, the total expenses for the fiscal year uh, by this amount, $19,274. So what this reserve funds amount is, uh, in our revenue section is, um, funds that we are sort of agreeing to spend out of our bank account. Um, and I've been doing a little bit of remedial bookkeeping with our, uh, bookkeeper. About how to represent that in our books, especially when it comes time to, um, you know, submit a tax return for this current fiscal year. So, uh, that's the way our budget looks. We did amend it in October to make that contribution. For our year-to-date spending, uh, revenue and expenses. Um, we have not taken any, uh, revenue. We have not received any dues revenue yet. Brandon mentioned that we are sending out dues, uh, invoices this month. Um, and we have not received their contribution from the town. And that is, uh, there's, that's just because, uh, the town hasn't made a contribution. We have an invoice to town. But, uh, Polly just reminded me about 10 minutes ago via email that we do need to, um, get the paperwork together, um, to make those contributions happen. So, do anticipate all those things happening. It is in the town budget. On the expense side, uh, you can see that we are 36% of the way through our, uh, administration budget. About halfway through the destination marketing budget. Just 31% of the way through our member listings visitor information budget. Uh, and then we did, uh, provide the check to, uh, Alta Shuttle for the Resort Shuttle contribution. Um, so that you can see that we're about 90% of the way through that membership services budget where we will, provide the shuttle contribution. Uh, and then finally about 20% of the way through the public art and events budget. Um, I know that, uh, Sarah has a number of events that are supported by the ACBB contribution to ACE on deck for the winter. And that's where, um, I believe a fair amount of our remaining public art and events budget will go. So, um, all said and done, we're about 57% of the way through our budget for the year. Um, our checking account balance, uh, down to $85,600. You know, this is a balance of funds that the Chamber has accrued over the past about 15 years, uh, of operating. So that is, um, that's kind of it for my, my presentation on our financial situation. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that information?
Great. Any other questions of Brandon or Chris? Okay, very thorough. I, this gives me a much better picture of, uh, what you guys are doing. And thanks, thanks very much for the update. Uh, we're running a bit behind, so I'm going to, in fact, we're within almost 25 minutes behind. Um, I'd like to go over to Mike Mon now, if he's available. Yes, he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, sorry. I'm out of the office, been down meeting with UDOT on some issues. So I'm just kind of en route coming back, but, uh,
Uh, Mike, should you, would you like to be put off for, uh, the 30, 30 minutes or so? And then when you're more, it's more convenient for you?
I just need a couple of minutes here. I'm just pulling off. I'll be, I can actually start talking now, but, uh, I'm just going to pull into a parking lot right here. So that'd be better. So I, I, we have submitted, uh, our, as we talked about before, we had put together a proposal that we've submitted to the Forest Service to replace, uh, the roadside parking, uh, with parking in the Wildcat Parking Lot. We have submitted that to the Forest Service. Uh, they have not indicated anything other than receipt of that. Uh, I do have a meeting with the Forest Service. They will be here at Alta, I think on the 22nd of February to review uh, kind of our master plan and things that we're planning to do in the next, uh, next year. And for, kind of for their scheduling purposes, you know, they're trying to rally their manpower because they have, uh, you know, they've lost Ben and they have some temporary staff in there. That's there. Hey, now you can see.
There you go.
And, uh, so we've, we've, we've submitted that. I'd met, I went down and met with Carlos, that of UDOT today, uh, to talk about, you know, I appreciate that they have, they're going through an EIS process and looking for longer-term solutions. Uh, but the purpose of my visit was, what are we going to do in the short term? In the next three to five years? And talked about, we have two major issues. We have up canyon congestion issues. They're primarily caused by road closures and slick roads and such. And, and we are, it's impacting the communities near the mouth of the canyon. We have a meeting set up with Sandy City, I think, next week. That they want to talk about that issue with the skiers and UDOT. Uh, so that's, and then the other thing we talked about was down canyon congestion. And as we've continued to do our research, the, the main cause of the red snake that we see in Alta is when the main line is closed. Roger, I believe a few years ago, you had put together a little paper that showed, you know, the impact of multiple merges, how it exponentially delays traffic. We've seen that happen many more times this season because the main line's been closed more. And, uh, we put together an analysis that showed, you know, if you have, um, just, um, six merge points in the system, it was like 30, let's see, six merge points was 63 cars would, would be between every one car, two cars that left Alta with six merge part, points. Well, the bypass road has, uh, 18 merge points. So literally hundreds of cars, uh, are able to merge in if you're merging one-on-one. And that's what brings the, our traffic to a stop. So basically, pretty much all the traffic on the bypass, which is over almost a thousand cars, when you look at all the parking lots between out and entry four, are able to merge into the traffic, uh, before two cars can leave Alta. And, uh, so we have brought that to the attention of UDOT and are trying to get some changes made in the short term to alleviate that. You know, part of that would maybe be using some merging lanes for the big bend there. Also exploring how can we keep the main line open? Everything from maybe a one-lane avalanche shed downhill to, um, the deason towers that can do the work in the middle of the day and then open up the main line for a few hours and then shut it back down. We're, we're trying to explore that with them to see if we can make some progress. Because regardless of whether they do buses or gondolas or whatever, this problem will not go away. Uh, and because those merges will still exist. And unless we can find some other solutions, we'll still have a, a red snake. Regardless of what other transportation solution is done. So we're, we're working on that a little bit with them. We'll see where that goes. We involved, uh, representatives from, uh, John Curtis's office in the discussion, uh, so that they could look for funding sources or get some support. Representative Curtis is interested in trying to help with transportation solutions in the canyon. I think we have a representative from his office showing up again next week to get a better understanding of the issues that are here in Little Cottonwood Canyon. Our, uh, our business levels this year are very close to where they were last year in terms of the number of skiers that have come. Our Icon visitation is down just a little bit. With the change that we made in Icon, all of our partner resorts in the Cottonwood Canyons are reporting Icon visitation levels in the, are 25 to 50% greater than last year. And so, uh, we've had the desired effect with, on the Icon and coming into, into the canyon. It's there. We, uh, you know, we've had a record snowfall so far through the end of January. We'll see how the rest of the year pans out. Uh, that's there. We also are working with UTA and this plays a little bit into the shuttle discussion as UTA has been unclear and unable to tell us if there will be any change in bus, ski bus service for next year at this point in time. We are, um, also have submitted to UTA a plan to adjust the wild, top of the Wildcat ramp to see if it's acceptable to them. That would allow buses to make that turn so that the bus could serve us through town up to Albion and back, you know, and back into Wild, into the GMD, down by the GMD. We have not gotten any feedback from them on that, but we're, we're hoping that we can maybe make a change there so that we can supplement that. And, you know, that may alleviate some of the need for the shuttle. We may be able to reduce the, get the town day shuttle thing back down or not. It depends on if they'll, what they're going to do on the bypass. But we have not been able to get anything out of them, but we are continuing to, to push them and ask, uh, if we can get some answers, just like, like Tom, we all want to plan and be ready for the next season. That's, you know, we're halfway through this one. And, uh, the next one will be upon us before we know it. It's there. That's kind of the, just, oh, I have a couple of things here too. Yeah, I noticed that the town has put out a position for a new town manager and we're losing our good friend and longtime public servant, John Goldner. John will be greatly missed. He's, his knowledge and, uh, understanding of, uh, the ordinances in the town has been invaluable over the years. As we've tried to work together as a community to, you know, provide recreational services and support the businesses and, and take care of the community that's, that's been here. And I just wanted to say thank you very much to John and all of the hard work that he's done and, uh, you know, figure out how we could twist his arm to stay for a few more years, but I don't think that's happened. Well done, John.
Thank you very much, Mike. It's been a pleasure.
Good. Any, any questions you have for the ski area, anyone?
Okay.
I, I have a question for Mike. Mike, given your, um, your comment, which I found fascinating, sir, about the, um, merging point slowing down traffic intuitively, that makes, you know, like a ton of sense. So did, did you talk at all about, um, the effects of having only down traffic and no passing and what, and, and whether that affected how fast people were able to move or the snake this year?
We, we've talked, they actually feel like that's been a positive result, that that has, uh, every, every time there's a merge, their statistics show it slows traffic down, even if it's a one-to-one merge. Traffic just moves slower to merge. And so by eliminating that. And so by eliminating that merge down, it has helped the traffic to move a little faster in the canyon. You know, the challenge, some of the challenges we're seeing this year manifest themselves is coming up canyon. That the amount of roadside parking being allowed at Snowbird and the fact that they have this. Everybody jockeying to get, secure them a parking spot. Is resulting in traffic backing out into the highway. And so sometimes you'll be coming up and you'll get to below White Pine and you'll, all of a sudden, traffic will be bumper to bumper and moving really slow. It's because of the, the cars can't feed fast enough into the Snowbird entries or they're. Parking on the roadside and slowing down the flow of traffic. And, and so, you know, we've been talking with that issue with them is how do we alleviate that going forward, do you have the same thing? Going down when that happens, but the merge, the merge analysis was, was quite startling that when you realize that. You know, at that time at three-thirty to four-thirty, if all the. A, a lot of the vehicles at Snowbird are trying to leave, that literally hundreds of cars are able to merge between two Alta cars. That leave Alta at the same time, and that's why we come to gridlock. Um, you know, the fact that you have cars above powder birds that have to back into traffic to get into the, to go back down canyon. You know, when one of them does that and open, it just, it just an exponential impact upon traffic merging and. And it's a, it's an issue that. I think is becoming the focus for me is that we have to figure out how to improve this, because if we don't, we're gonna end up with. Some sort of transportation solution and we will still have this issue.
Okay, any other questions of Mike? Okay, thank you for your uh, mobile state reporting. Okay, uh, let me just move on to approval of the consent agenda, meeting minutes, staff and financial reports. Are there any, um, let's see. I. Um. I move that we uh approve the consent agenda. The uh, January eleventh, um, meeting minutes, the staff and financial reports. Any seconds, seconded by Sheridan, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, so, uh, so passed, now any questions regarding these department reports?
I had one question about the water fund, with the five hundred and sixty thousand that's still in this year's budget. I believe those are all assigned funds, how much of that do you think is gonna move to next year's budget, John?
I would bet three-seventy for Peruvian and States West. Probably close to a hundred for Grizzly Gulch. So, three-seventy. Maybe just under five hundred thousand dollars.
So the number will end up being around sixty or seventy grand for this year and then the twenty-four budget will have. That five hundred thousand and plus, anything else we decide to do in twenty-four?
Yeah, the other thing I'd add to what John said would be the, um, the water meter project moving. We'll probably only spend about ten thousand in this fiscal year.
Is that in the? Is that in five-sixty-four?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah, this year should be, this, this upcoming year should be the year that we wanted this past year. We'll be more ready.
Great question, thanks, John.
Okay, any other questions concerning? These matters, minutes, staff and financial reports? All right, let's uh, move on to the mayor's report, oh yeah, that's me, um. This past month. Uh, at least weather-wise, it seems like it's a, a repeat of uh, our January meeting again. The, the, the Marshals Department does an absolutely incredible job in. Keeping this place safe and moving and I am uh, just. Amazed at how well they all work together, you dot, UPD, UFA. Alta Ski List, Snowbird, uh, and other, and, and, and uh. Other entities, um. John. Goldner reminded me that um. We've, um, but twenty-five years ago, the town got. Uh, and uh, a, a award, I wanna say citation, a positive citation for. Or ex, organizing this um. This uh, road committee. Operation and how it has um. Functioned so successfully for a quarter century in a world in which much controversy and contention. Seems to be, seems to fade and yet. This operation with multiple interests or, or multiple entities, but a common interest. Namely, the flow up and down this canyon seems to really work well and. It, it does so almost invisibly to most of us. And so, that's really remarkable. Okay, going on about this year, um, as of yesterday, according to the. Uh, the Alta Ski List's uh. Website, we've had four hundred and ninety-three inches of snow. Breaking all the records since uh, that have been kept, kept since uh. Well, since nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two. Uh, more snow is forecast for next week. Uh, whether that comes or not is my, in my mind questionable, because I find long-term forecasts are unreliable. Uh, for instance, things like the shadow of the groundhog. What's a Connie, my, I can't remember the name of that damn groundhog. While Salt Lake County has proclaimed the tam, pandemic over, their cases are still with us and it's killing and making sick a lot of people. Ninety-six-year-old friend of ours was recently infected after ending a concert. And fortunately, he was vaccinated and is recovering, but uh, it's, it's, it is still out there. The town experienced several instances of fraudulent charges to our bank account. And by John taking diligent efforts and spending hours at the bank. Trying to get this stuff straightened out and reversed and so forth. It seems like that they have um diminished and uh, or apparently stopped. But it took a lot of time to uh. Uh, to get the, the bank to help us get that working. Uh, Mike Mon spoke to um, the roadside parking and the. Uh, proposal to eliminate the, the roadside parking between Wildcat Entry and DPH. Um, we sent, or I signed a letter to Ranger um. Becky Hotsi in support of eliminating that roadside parking as a safety measure, she told me that it would take some time for her to act. On it, uh, as she is very short-staffed. Um, Brandon spoke to uh, a, a bill introduced by. Representative Phil Lyman of uh, Landing called HB seventy-six. Were that bill to be enacted, it would um. Essentially crack open the water provisions requiring Salt Lake City. Be provided to the areas outside the service boundaries and particularly all those is um. Unbuilt lots in the, in the um, Albion Basin. The bill has been referred to committee. Uh, and uh, which means it will not be enacted in this session, but we expected to be. Re-introduced in the future, was reintroduced in the past, um, Salt Lake City Public Utilities Department is uh. Strongly against us, against it, and if we were asked, we would say the same thing. Um, I. I attended the uh. Wasatch Front Regional Council meeting on uh, January twenty-sixth and it turned out, it's, it's usually a fairly uh. Uh, benign affair, uh. But it, it, it really, there was a huge crowd, I mean, there were a hundred people, standing room only or. In a, in a place they expected about ten, excuse me, and. Um, and the great majority of those people were attending to protest the uh, gondola. And this wasn't even a question of whether they would endorse the gondola or not, it was just a question of whether. The gondola should uh, appear on a, on a list of possible transportation options, o, options in the future, but. To me, it was an indicator of what uh, the. Uh, latent um. Uh, antipathy towards this gondola is on the part of a lot of uh, grassroots elements. Um. The staff has um, engaged recently in an exercise identified significant issues and challenges that over the next three years. And the top candidates that we uh, came up with were. Uh, combination of staffing and human capital on, and one, and the other was infrastructure, which is really not a surprise. But the next step is to develop strategies to address those issues and I uh, will. Keep people advised as those come up, did you wanna say something at this point, Sharon? Got unmute, unmute. Sheridan, you're muted.
I know, sorry, Mayor, my phone wasn't responding, I apologize. Um, the Wasatch Regional Council, I just had a quick question, didn't they approve potential funding for the gondola to the tune of one-point-five billion? No?
No, they didn't approve any funding at all, they were just making a list of potential transportation. Um, act, entities additions that might occur over the Wasatch run over some. Time horizon, which I didn't quite get. But most of it had to do with things like tracks and uh, and highways and so forth. But the gondola was on the list.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, um. My next. Item, um, every two years, there are two council, town council seats that come up for. Um, election and so, and so that is, every two years, two of the seats expire. This year will be the same, that two of the seats will expire in the, in the, at the end of this year. And so there will be an election this fall to, to fill those two seats and I would like. Um. I would like more candidates than fewer candidates and this is not at all a. Um, disrespectful of the two incumbents who are Sheridan and Elise, but. Just that my sense that a hair, that a healthy democracy gives the electorate. A, a, a wider choice and so I would like to see. I'd like to see more people get involved in uh. In uh, this uh, in this element of public service. And I might say it's not necessarily fun all the time. But you'll go away with a sense of uh, you did something good for the community. Um. Mike mentioned John Goldner's departing soon and um, I wrote a piece about uh, his. Many contributions to uh, the town and over his forty-plus years of uh, service. And I'm not gonna repeat those. Um, but I would like to say something about uh, what he's done for me. So um, I first met him, I think in the mid-eighties. Um, at a time when my daughter and his future wife, Mimi, were. Waitrons, as they were called then, at gold miners. And um. When we started looking for property, Margaret and I in the late eighties, um, he was a guy that was pos, what was possible and what wasn't. And after we bought a lot and were planning to build, he did the same, you know, showed us what, what worked and what, what wouldn't work. And during our construction phase, he was always there to, to advise and get us over hurdles. And once in, once we've. Finally completed our house and moved in, he was a cheerful face, it was striding up and down the road in the winter. Pumped iron as he was walking up to Grizzly, the Grizzly Road in the summer, with his shirt off, I might add. Uh, and uh. Uh. And since I've been mayor, he's been the guy who has helped me with every issue, just as he's had at all of our encounters. Today, the ground that our towns occupy are a result of his fifteen years of work. Trying to get the Forest Service to cede those properties to us, which he did. Um. So, thank you, John, for all you've done for us and uh. Alta would not be the wonderful place it is today with absent your contribution. And our next meeting, I will invite others to say whatever they like to say to John.
I'll make a point to skip that next meeting then.
So, and that next meeting will be March eighth through Clark. And uh. That's it for the mayor's report, any questions on that?
Thank you for the kind words, Mayor, thank you very much. It really has been an honor working for this amazing and special and weird place. And that just seems odd that it's ending, but. For those left over, keep up the hard work, keep Alta, Alta. Cause there's not many places like this anymore and it's easy to change.
And impossible to fix.
Bingo.
Okay, uh, last need. Last time we, um, oh, incidentally, um. I recognize we're behind schedule a bit and I do not think that we will need to have a uh, a closed-door executive session. This afternoon, so that'll help a little bit and, but, and last year, last month, we skipped over the. Open and Public Meeting Acts um, training, so Polly, why don't you uh, launch into that for us?
Sure, and I'll try to um, expedite it as well, cause I know that many of you have done the very basic training, but. The idea here is to um, just delve a little bit more and just in case anyone has any questions or. Um, you know, anything, so, um. Let's see, so just, I always go into just the spirit of the act is to allow transparency to uh. Let the public know that town business happens in a transparent place in the open. Um, so that, you know, they don't just think that things are happening behind the, behind closed doors. Um, so um, the spirit of the act is to act openly, okay, go ahead. And it applies to not just the council, but any, but also the planning commission. Or any other, you know, the budget committee, anywhere where you have a body that um. Has um. Is actually spending money or um. You know, authority, so because there's a quorum of the council on the budget committee, that's why we always have to notice it, it has to be in public. And um, it is okay to talk one-on-one, but my advice is always to. You know, if you can do it in a meeting, do it in a meeting so that the public gets the benefit of hearing you discuss the matters. Going through the process, it's a much more authentic uh, way to do it and much more true to the spirit of the act, okay? So a meeting is anytime you have three members of the council, including the mayor, the mayor counts as a council member. Um, that you're convening, so it's not a chance meeting, if you all end up at, you know. The P-Dog for a few beers. The P dog for a few beers while because you're stuck in traffic and you can't get back to. Whatever you can't go shopping down Canyon. That's just a chance meeting, but. Anytime you're planning on discussing town business or convening. Uh, that counts and the last part of this, I always emphasize, just go back one second, sorry. Emails like be very careful about texting or emails. We talk about that, you know. If you start having a conversation on email. It can become a meeting when you're talking about town business. It's okay if we're just talking about scheduling that type of thing, very procedural. Type things who's coming to the meeting or that kind of thing, but anything that's substantive. Could be viewed as a meeting. And chat also applies. I used to say conference calls, but nobody does those anymore, so rarely. Um, so social events are okay. You can, you know, someone can have a party and invite a quorum, just don't talk about business. And because we're not meeting in person, you don't really get the meeting after the meeting, but. Um, a lot of times, once we do go back in person, that's always a little bit of a danger as you want it, especially if you've had an exciting meeting. Everyone wants to rehash what just happened. And sometimes substantive things can happen there. Okay? Um, and then I always just mention in terms of email is that email. Is usually public, uh, subject to the grandma, the government records laws. So if you are emailing between each other, it is discoverable. That's why we have you all set up with out town Alta email so you can segregate and all town business happens with. Your town Alta email. I have another situation out, you know, not with Alta, obviously, but where. You know, a mayor got his personal email subpoenaed because. The, you know, it was litigation and it was. Alleged that he had been conducting doing town things through his personal email. So as long as you keep all of your. Email related to Alta on your Alta, Tana Alta email account, then it's all in a place where no one would be able to go into your personal email. And just generally always be careful about what you're putting in your emails because. You know, sometimes we can get a little relaxed and informal and they are subject to grandma. And so if someone wanted to look at them. Uh, if the public wanted to look at them, they could. So. There you go. Okay, location. There are rules about the location. I don't, we don't need to get into, you know. That, especially since we're going electronic meetings. That's been the norm since March twenty twenty. We're still, the state's still allowing us to have meetings without an anchor location. Um, so as long as it's a health safety issue that meets the law. Okay, closed meetings, which you do not have very many of, and we had a question about this earlier today. There's only five main, five reasons that a public meeting can be closed. And, you know, so it's personnel or character of an individual, litigation, real estate. Security personnel, security systems. And criminal investigation regarding criminal misconduct. Um, so when that happens, I'll be involved, but it's just important to realize that it's very limited when it can be closed. It's the deadline is twenty four hours before the meeting. Town clerk is and assistant town clerk are very good at getting your packets out earlier. Technically, you can change the agenda up until twenty four hours before the meeting starts. And, you know, it's important for the public to be able to see what you're doing. And it gets posted in certain places and you should all be signed up for the Utah public notice website. You know, for governmental activities that you're interested in. I get them for all my towns and. I, you know, you you just can see so planning commission and all that all falls under the Utah public notice website. So that's just kind of more technical. Again, public comment. I always like to make this distinction. And different towns kind of have different thresholds. Uh, in terms of, you know, an open meeting, just it's like when you go down to going up to the Capitol, right? You can sit in. And listen to lawmakers make law, but you're not allowed to speak. But there are certain times when they do have public hearings and you can speak. So. It's, you know, state code requires certain times where it has to be a public hearing. Otherwise, it's generally just that the public has a right to listen. Uh, to your deliberations, to your meeting. But of course, if you want to solicit public input, you always can, or you know, sometimes you get that raised hand or whatever. So. Uh, and sometimes that's helpful to hear what your constituents have to say. Um, you can talk about things. So if a member of the public brings up something in a public comment portion of your meeting at the beginning. And you want to just generally discuss it, you can, as long as no final action is taken. Okay? All your meetings are recorded. And that is the case for everything but site visits. And you need to have minutes for all the meetings. So that's why it's very careful, you know, again. Jen and Molly are very careful to get you those. It's very important to read through and make sure they're accurate. Uh, you can have emergency meetings that get around this. Luckily, that doesn't happen. I've never had an emergency meeting in all my fifteen plus years of being a town attorney. But there is that possibility. And lastly, um, you know, if you knowingly or intentionally violate it, it can be a costly misdemeanor. And. So it's important to to follow the rules, not just because it's the right thing to do, but also you could. Break the law if you don't abide by it. So that's just a very quick overview, but I kind of like to do this once in a while. Um, before, you know. To supplement that video that you do with the state auditor. And also I'm always available to answer any questions. If you ever have a question about something. Always feel free to ask me or Cameron. And are there any questions now?
So I. I do have a question, Polly, which is that. Pres- procedural. Matters are, I think, what you described as exempt. For instance. There could be a message to all the town council. Are you available for a meeting next week at? A special meeting next week at three o'clock on Tuesday? Or would Wednesday work better or Thursday work better or something like that? And that can be. Done legally.
Correct. That's fine, but you'll see often. And Jen is really good about doing this. Is she'll blind copy the town council. So if by mistake you hit reply all. You don't end up, it doesn't go to everyone and start that conversation. And it's hard because sometimes you see an email and you want to react to it, but if the rest of the council is on it, you start having substantive discussions. So. The blind copy is very effective to way to stop that from happening.
So what would be the other examples of procedural matters that would be exempt? Uh, I mean, scheduling and clear is one.
Yeah, I mean, scheduling is kind of the big one that I see. You know, whatever you can have that can be in the meeting, that's better, right? Because it just shows the transparency. It just shows. The work that's being done is done in the public. I'm trying to think of other procedural. I mean, scheduling is the big one. It's really non substantive.
Much. Any other questions of Polly? Thank you for that update.
Sure.
The next to the last. Item on the agenda is discussion of an ordinance which we have not yet drafted. Um, I think all of our members know that. With John's departure, we're going to have have a relook at how we're operating the town. Uh, staff. And my. Idea was to. Hire a town manager who would manage the town staff. Well, it turns out that I picked the wrong words because town manager is a. A term that the. Legislature has captured and defined rather narrowly. And with all sorts of constraints on it. But that's not what I had in mind. Uh, town administrator is. Is a better fit, but. Really what I'm after is trying to have a chief of staff because I think really part time mayor, which I. Foresee we will have with the our budget limitations, really. For the foreseeable future. That we need a full time person to to be the operational, the the chief of operations or. Chief of staff for the. For the the town. Uh, staff. And sorry, I bumbled that a lot, but I think you know what I'm getting at. I. Uh, we have not yet created. Um, an ordinance that would go with this, but we expect to by. Next meeting and I think we'll have be able to to send out drafts of that before the meeting to get some reactions, but. That's that's where I'm going. I think I've mentioned it to. Each of you one at a time in accordance with the lessons we just got from Polly. And. And since the legislature has not defined what a chief of staff is, maybe we'll use that term and. Be have a great deal more freedom than we might have otherwise. So any comments, questions on that? Well, let's off, let's move to new business then and see.
I had a comment on that. I I'm trying to think about. What? Uh, you know, the the what definitions or issues with the state you're struggling with with the title of manager? You know, to me, the manager is. Whatever we have the ordinance say the manager is, we need to create, we need to create. The position of manager by writing an ordinance and I think there's actually pretty broad latitude about. What those powers would be. To me, you know, the issue is really. Do we want to continue with the chief of staff or whatever you're going to call that position being relatively unempowered? Um, and more of sort of a conduit. To the mayor and. And more like an assistant to the mayor. But not a lot of not no real authority, or we want to look at turning. Doing what? Has been very popular across Utah with many other municipalities that have the five member council form of business. Which is to delegate some of the mayor's powers and duties to. A town manager via the ordinance, basically separating sort of the day to day operation of the town. From, in all cases, the mayor. Retains his legislative authority, judicial authority, and also sort of the face of the town. Generally speaking, all that kind of stuff stays with the mayor. All we, most of the other communities are doing via their ordinance is assigning the day to day operation of the town. Uh, is empowering the town manager to conduct the day to day operation of the town. So you're assigning the administrative and executive duties. Um, it's funny, everybody gets hung up on the word executive. You say, oh, my God, you know, the mayor is not going to be the executive anymore. You know, the mayor, the executive duties are really just policy fulfillment and policy execution duties. So the policy is still being established at the council. Level. And so it's a little less frightening when you think about it that way. It's not like the guy, the person in the town manager jobs. Just going to go willy nilly and can do whatever they want. It's that you're delegating the authority to execute the policies of the governing body. Uh, and and delegating that to the town manager figure. And I think as we look forward, you know, we were fortunate, you know. John, in over the years, had was relatively unempowered in this regard, and honestly, I think we're lucky he's he stayed with us so long. Um, I understand, um, you know, some of his feelings about. You know, the level of support that he had or the authority he had or what's his role. I think this is an opportunity to address. Those issues and more clearly define the role of town administrator or town manager. And specifically, I think it's about separating the day to day operation from running the governor but governing body and. In my mind, having the mayor continue to run the governing body, be the loudest voice on the council, lots of powers are staying with the mayor. Really, really separating the. Um, powers to go ahead and execute the policies of the governing body so that the person who's in that seat has more authority. And I I think that 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 would serve us all well, including, this is about right sizing. The mayor's responsibilities. You know, the mayor's responsibilities over the years have become something of a hodgepodge. And every mayor's approached it a little differently, but it seems to me when you consider that the town manager job is a paid job. And the mayor's job is a volunteer job. We have all of this work lined up, you know, piled along the the mayor's plate. And as a volunteer, it can be an overwhelming amount of work. I know that that Harris felt it was from time to time and I I sense that you do as well. And so we're just trying to like right size the mayor's job. Not not really assign any policymaking authority to the town manager, but have the town manager be empowered to conduct the day to day affairs of the town. And so I I'm. Really attracted to going in this direction. I think. I think if we're going to have somebody that comes in and is really going to do a good job running the town, we need to empower them. And. How we got, how we went this far without empowering the town manager, I don't I don't really know, or town administrator, you know that. So I think this would be a golden opportunity to fix. Um, this situation or address this situation.
Well, I do too. I think it's a golden opportunity to fix it. The only the the hang up I had was that. When I started looking at what Cameron had put together in a in a draft ordinance. Uh, following the what the legislation. Uh, what the legislator defined the what the town manager was, I came across. Some things that. That disturbed me. One was the town manager was appointed for a three year term. And. That's interesting. Uh, it's not indefinite or 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 more or less or serves at the. At the pleasure of the town council. Uh, so that one, that one got my attention.
I don't think it has to stay that way. Polly, do you, we can.
So I, yeah, I unmuted because it's so the maximum contract you can have is for three years. You can't, you're not allowed to have it be any longer. But the, under the town manager, under the statutory. Setup. You, the person would have a contract and you, he he or she would be an at will employee. And could be fired at any point. And depending on that reason, there might be different severances. Uh, that might be associated with it, if any. You know, it is a kind of interesting. Um, balance, the town, it's really comes down to is the person. Beholden to the council and the council policies, or is the person more of just. Getting that policy through the mayor and is more. Completely directed by the mayor. Those are kind of. Completely directed by the mayor. Those are kind of, and you could, you know. It's good to have an ordinance or good to have a very clear job description so that person knows what um. He, you know, who's their boss and uh what their job duties are.
Yep, clear job description is absolutely the right thing to have.
Well, clear, clear and empower. The right person if we don't empower them. And again, I think we're super fortunate that John. Um, it is very little empowerment in the nineteen ninety-three. Uh, ordinance that created John's position, and that's how things were done then and that, you know, no crangover spilled milk, but. I think that it's gonna be tough. To recruit the right candidate without them having some authority, the authority to basically to run the office and to run the town day-to-day. And and you know, the direction is still coming from the council and um. And that's the governing body and the mayor is still gonna run the governing body, so I. You know, it are there's some subtle, there's some subtle differences. You know, the council appoints them instead of the mayor appointing them with the consent of the council. What's really the practical difference there? I mean, you know, pretty, pretty modest practical difference. I think. I think with some thought and discussion, you can really kind of get your arms around every issue. At least everyone that that Polly, Cameron and Jen and I have talked about it the last couple of weeks. I I think that it's it's worth exploring going in this direction. It rather than go the let let's let's tune up another administrative role. Uh, I'd like to see us go in the direction of a more empowered town manager. Going forward.
Well, and that's a good point, John, because whether it's me or anybody else, you still have to do everything. Everything that comes across the desk, every citizen that walks in, every problem that um hits the town office. But whether you have any authority to get people to listen to you and help you and agree with you. That that's that's a problem if you don't have that.
That's what that's what we should be changing.
Still doing everything.
That was my takeaway from our our special meeting last week, you know, that that's. We talk about real hierarchy, a hierarchical structure within the town management. I think this is the path to actually having a hierarchy. Um, as opposed to the town administrator uh or uh. You know, I I haven't heard the term chief of staff, so I don't I don't know what really is involved with that, but.
Well, and I'd hate to get too um too locked into or too sidetracked by titles. Uh, because like there used to be a manager council form of government. Where the manager was the boss over the mayor and the council. And if the manager got really out of control, that person could get fired. Well, that's no longer legal. There's five communities in the state that allow that, you know, as a public administrator, we're supposed to support that, but I don't support that.
We're pushing for, that's right, you know, I was just saying, that's not what I'm pushing for at all.
Right, so the the policy and the guidance comes from the mayor and the council. And then the manager and his staff just follow through. But yeah, just don't get hung up on the manager thing because, I mean, that's a term of art. And I think it's West Valley. I can't remember who all. But there were five of them where the manager's the boss, and again, I think that's wrong because he's not elected.
Uh, let let me just jump in. That's not, it's not even feasible anymore. You can't, I mean, that's not what we're doing, but it's not. Those are grandfathered in, so the only options are what we like an ordinance manager. That is set out by state law which listed or just having. The, you know, either you can have an ordinance, but having the person. Be accountable directly to the mayor versus directly to the council.
And the, you know, it was interesting, you sent some background material, I. I love the David Church piece. I thought that was terrific, and there's several different lists there, and then there were also all those cities that you sent. Yeah, some of those look great to me, like Harriman. Harriman had a great ordinance, you know, that wasn't exactly one oh four B or whatever the state statute is, so. They had a little bit of latitude, but they stayed pretty close to the state statute. I think the important thing again to remember, it's funny Cliff Curry was gonna be some. Stuff about this beforehand about the executive powers aspect, and people get really worked up about when you say, oh, we're gonna transfer the executive powers. The executive powers, according to the state, are policy execution powers. And I think most of us think of executive powers as sort of grant more brand than that. We're having more latitude than that, but that's not what the state thinks. The state says executive powers are our powers of execution.
As an executive.
Well, as in follow the instruction of the governing body. That the governing body is still really gonna make the policy. And the mayor is still really gonna be in charge because the mayor is gonna run the council, set the agenda, be the loudest voice in the council, so. You know, I know change is hard, but I I think that um. These are pretty manageable levels of change, and I think our town operation, it's a big pivot to ask our staff. Every forty and now the mayor's job, you know, has stopped being a thirty-year job and. Every new mayor comes in and wants to sort of redirect how everything's done, and this would provide much greater continuity over the long haul because. You know, the mayor could replace the town manager uh by by uh. Town council vote, you know, so the mayor would have to get the vote from the town council to do it, but that's, you know, the mayor just won the election, so, you know. You could have new mayors want to change the the town manager, but I don't think that's really what would happen, and I think what we what you'd achieve is. Is a little less drama for the staff, a little less change of needless change of direction. And better continuity, and that would facilitate some of the long-term planning things that. That are the kinds of things that Craig talks about and uh, you know, uh, like and a better operation of the town because the. The town manager would actually be empowered to do his job. So. Just throwing it out for discussion, you know, I'm not like looking for ledge, just I just think this is an area worth exploring, and I think. I Polly and Cameron, do you think, are we on track here? Is this seem like the right area? Got any opinion?
Yeah, so I I think there's three sort of main things I wanted to talk about um and get some direction from the council on. I think the title uh ultimately doesn't matter. Because we can, we can, we can write the ordinance to delegate the duties that that the council wants, and so. The reason the town manager became an issue is because I. I was the one that sort of jumped to the state code when that term was used, and that's not what was intended, and so that's why we're trying to back off and redo it, so. We'll call the position what we want to call it. That one's not as important. The second one is pretty important, though, and that is the chain of authority from the person because. Of a town administrator that reports to the mayor, uh that can be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council. Can also be removed by the mayor without the advice and consent of the council, and that's a big deal. And so that chain of authority is significantly different between the town administrator and the town manager under state code. And so I think it's important for the council to to discuss and decide where you want that chain of authority to go. Um, the third one are the are the duties, and that's really is is kind of, you know, the devil's in the details. What authority do you want to give to this person in that position? And I think talking about the executive duties is important because if you if you delegate the executive duties to the manager, it it will. Uh, remove some work from the mayor, but that move would also increase the work for the council. For example, the executive duties of the mayor include. Uh, enforcing or waiving fines or agreements or stipulations with contracts, et cetera. If you delegate that authority from the mayor to the town manager. The town manager would have to use that, and then any appeal or recourse from that would be to the council, so you would have to be more involved in some cases. Which is fine, but I just I just want the council to understand, you know, how that would work in application. And so really what the staff is looking for is. What do you want the chain of authority to be for this position, and what duties do you want them to do? The rest of it, we can make work with the statute and and put that into the ordinance, but that's kind of the main direction that we need to go at. And if I can just close by saying, the difference is important because. A town manager, um, we can continue with just the vote of the council in an ordinance. If the council wants to delegate some of the council's administrative or executive duties to the manager. Or the mayor's executive or administrative duties to the manager, the vote requirements are very specific. So if you're removing an uh authority or a duty from the mayor. To the manager position. You would have to have the mayor's vote and a majority of the remainder of the council. Or you would have to have all four council members in support, not including the mayor, and so. That's why I think it's important to highlight the authority and the duties. Because that's gonna depend on what the vote would need to carry that ordinance.
Well, well, let me just address that last point quickly. As far as I'm concerned, it. I wouldn't push to do this over Roger's objection. So if 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 we can't get by him with Roger on this in the next month, then then, you know, I'm happy to just. Be quiet and go back to my reading. Uh, you know, I think I think we all have to feel good about what we're doing. Um, I think the empowerment of the person who you're saying is the town manager or the person running the the show. Again, they're not, it's it's almost like the lawyers, they're not really there making policy. They're executing policy created by the governing body, and so I think it's actually getting it just right. Um, because we want them to be empowered to execute the policy. So that we can spend our time making better governing body decisions, and and again, that's where you get into the idea that it's a right size in the mayor's role. Where right now, the mayor's role is like huge and undefined, like, yeah, I. Hard hard to get your arms around, and I think this would really provide a lot of clarity and definition as to who's responsible for what. Craig?
Yeah, I want to jump in and particularly off your last remark, so he here's what I'm hearing. Uh, number one, the good news is we don't have to worry too much about whether we call it administrator, grand poobah or 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 anything else. That that that's good. Uh, secondly, I think that you, John Byrne and Roger are generally uh 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 agreed. In the general, in the direction to go. Uh, Roger's comments about it being a volunteer position. Uh, versus versus a full-time position, I think dictates that you need to have very clear, strong form. Of the town manager position, so I think you guys are generally aligned. Uh, one suggestion that I have that may help clarify it is one of the things that we're missing. Is a job description for the town mayor. And that, I think, has caused some problem because it's sort of like. One of these clauses about, well, everything else is reserved to the state, right? It it's, I think. We've had some changes from mayor to mayor in between, you know, between the relationship of what the mayor does versus what. The town administrator has done, and I think we may need to detail out both sides. I think we do it sort of from the position of what authorities are up at the mayor, what authorities are down at the next layer, I'm gonna call it the town manager. Then I think we'll have clarity on both sides, and it'll be easier to to ensure that we don't have. Uh, major changes with with the changeover in the mayor.
I'm sure that there exists a um a statutory town uh of a mayor job description. Is that true, Polly or Cameron?
Yeah, there there is a description of their duties.
It probably, yeah, it's probably very broad, and uh. I presume that we could uh. Tune it to our own.
Well, I mean, you have, there's start, it is very broad. It was included in the staff report that Cameron put together. But you can't really, I mean, I guess you could just put together what your, what you view the expectations are. I mean, the role of mayor runs the gamut. Right, for in some situations, for some towns, it's ceremonial, it's leading the meeting. You know, only those duties that can't be taken from the mayor. In other towns, the mayor is doing everything, hiring people. You know, very involved with all the contracts, that kind of thing, and you can make. The what the mayor does and the town manager do really go hand in hand because. You're delegating those mayoral or and or council duties to the manager. So um. You know, you, we could put together something that kind of is what's your expectation, and then from that. Yield what the manager's expectations are. That's obviously possible.
Sharon, you wanna say something?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John Byrne, for your comments. I agree that I think this role should be an empowered role. That's um has real authority, real teeth. Cameron, you made one point that I'm not certain I understand. Were you saying that the town administrator or town? Uh, manager. Could be fired by the mayor without the consent and approval of the council? That's a point that I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, so under the current framework, um, the town administrator is. Uh, appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council, and the town administrator derives their authority from the mayor's. And so the chain of command goes through the mayor, and so the mayor could dismiss a town administrator under our current framework. With no input from the council, and and so that's not a problem when everybody gets along, but. It could become a problem when people don't get along, and so that's that's one of the issues, and so that chain of authority is important.
But a town manager could not.
That's how it is now, though. If we change it, it wouldn't be that way anymore. And 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 so I see that as a feature. And the same is true with uh. Well, I guess the officers are, I won't get into officers, but it would be different if we did it. The way that I think we should uh go with this traditional manager role. Um, the mayor wouldn't be able to fire the town manager, but you keep the town manager on a short leash. And you keep him responsive because you get, he's an at-will employee. And just a simple majority of the town council could replace him. So he's highly incentivized to keep the mayor happy, he's highly incentivized to keep the town council happy, he's not just out there. Roaming, you know, puppy roaming in the field of flowers. He's, you know, he's. He's got plenty of of supervision.
Well, and it's kind of that way now because you could fire, yes, no woman would be silly enough to take this job. Only men would, no. Uh, it's kind of that way now, John, because the mayor needs two more votes to dump somebody like me. The only thing that I worry about for this person, this poor person is gonna take this in the future. Is if it's council-directed, that's why it all started, council and mayor. So the council comes up with the policies and the direction, give them to the mayor, and the mayor gives them. To the manager and and the staff. Um, we just have to be careful that. This person is not getting five different sets of instructions. If the council is in control. Cause that would be a.
And see, in my mind, my my model for this is that the town. Chief of staff, we'll use that word, works for the mayor and takes his direction from the mayor. And he doesn't, he or she does not take his direction individually. You know, councilperson X says town uh chief of staff, you do so-and-so. But the mayor says, no, I don't want that council, that the chief of staff to do that. That's gonna be a mess. So I think that the. The chief of staff works for the mayor. Now, the mayor's gotta sort it out among the rest of the town council as to what's. What's okay and what is what isn't okay, but uh. I I feel that the town, the. Town chief of staff needs one boss. So I throw that out there for discussion.
Yeah. Well, the the question is, is um he going to be empowered? Or is he really just gonna be executing what the mayor tells him to do? And would it would be better off if he was. Executing the will of the governing body. Which includes includes the mayor, but isn't the mayor alone?
Which is funny because that's kind of what I've been doing for the last forty years, although it's not been written down. Which is funny because that's kind of what I've been doing for the last forty years, although it's not been written down. I mean, if you want to stay alive in this job, you'd deal with all five of you.
Right. I think there's plenty of reason that the mayor is still going to be the loudest voice on the council, have the most influence. But you're separating the duties, governing body, and the day-to-day operation of the town. And because the mayor is the strongest person in the governing body, they still really are in charge. And as a practical matter, probably not much changes. But when the guy goes to bed at night, he knows that he has some independent authority and that his authority isn't a hundred percent deriving by the, from the will of the mayor. So I think it's a more secure position, uh, for the employee to be operating in going forward. Obviously, we're not going to get to an endpoint here today, but this was a good discussion, and I think it was a great introduction to this topic. Yes.
Sorry. I mean, I, I think that we need to take our time with this ordinance is the only thing. Um, I know that what Cameron has proposed can implicate different tracks moving down the road, and we just need to really think about it. I mean, this council meets once a month and I don't know if we're going to be able to write an ordinance where this person answers to the council. It makes more sense for me to them to answer to the mayor and then have the council be advising, but I get, you know, Roger and staff, I think you guys know what we need and whatever you propose. You know, but again, I'm, I'm not in a hurry to get this written. I know we want to hire somebody, but we need to take our time because this could have some implications down the road is the only thing that I would say, and I better get going. Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Would it, would it make sense for, and I'd be happy to work with them on it, would it make sense to, um, take a stab at producing a town manager ordinance so that we could talk about it at the next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Would you be okay with that?
Oh, absolutely. Um, and I think that that's the track that Cameron is on is to produce a draft town manager orient, ordinance. And that, um, you know, I would recommend that it be bounced off us, not as a group at one time to collect, um, uh, input on it, and I believe that's consistent with the, uh, Open and Public Meter Act, is it not? Okay.
Yeah, it's fine if it's one-on-one, it's just don't have a Google edit document where you're all working on the same version.
Yeah, got it.
Well, I, I'd be happy to work with them on the, the empowered manager side of it, if, uh, if you're looking for a volunteer.
You need any help, Cameron?
Yeah, I'm happy to, and I, and, and I do think it would be good to proceed that way because I think it's important to get each council member's perspective and viewpoint before we bring that uh, to the council for a vote, and so I think that would help.
Yeah, I mean.
Ideally, in four weeks, we would have a draft that everybody is comfortable with. Because, well, they've all had opportunities to, uh, input to, and what ever.
And it's possible that we'll come down to two things and we'll have to vote, but again, I, I don't think anybody wants to do this over your objection, Roger, so you're the mayor, we're not, nobody's going to be, you know, railroading you on this or anything. You know, this needs, we all need to feel good about it if we're going to go in this direction.
Yeah, and my goal is just to come up with something that works. And I mean, that's pretty.
Yeah, I, my goal is to come up with the right long-term structure so that, um, we can attract the right candidate to be the town manager, a candidate who feels empowered and can, uh, you know, effectively manage the office and execute the will of the governing body.
Yeah.
Right, something that works, and it's always worked, but if it's not as defined as it could be, it works at a great personal cost.
Uh-huh.
And maybe not everybody is willing to do that, so more definition would be better.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, our last item is new business. Would anybody like to bring up something that hasn't already?
Can I just mention one thing? I sent an email to you, Mayor, and to some of staff. The Utah Leagues of Cities and Towns has a legislative, um, policy committee that meets once a week during the legislature. Um, we looked it up and it was very outdated, and you can have, the town can have up to three members, three voting members, so the more members, the more voice you have. Um, you can do it by Zoom, so, um, it's a little confusing. At least one member needs to be an elected official. It looks like, it says at least two out of the three need to be elected officials, but when I look at what other towns are providing, it seems that many towns and cities have two um, staff members and one elected official, so.
And we did it that way through the town, and they're, they're very receptive. Uh, and I know that the, the personnel listed on the official list, um, it's Kate Black and Tom Pollard, but if I went down there to the league, we, they'd let us vote. So, uh, and they're very responsive to the town of Alton, and we're not, uh, we're very rarely at odds with everybody else, so it's a good experience.
This is a legislative policy committee for the league or for the legislature?
Uh, it's the league for the legislate, for the, for the legislature. So they, you know, the league takes a position, that's the, that, one of their main jobs is to lobby and to assert, um, the position of cities and try to make sure that bills are advantageous to cities and towns. And so whenever there's a bill, for example, that water bill that we were talking about earlier, they might talk about that and it could, you know, there could be of the committee votes on how the league will, what position it will take concerning certain bills. So the bigger voice, the more, if, if you have people attending, I think it helps, and it also helps obviously with, um, you know, communications with other towns and, and just being part of the league. So, um, you know, as John said, it's, it's a good, it's a good committee to be a part of. I know it's one more responsibility, but I would recommend it.
And, um, how often does it meet? Or how does it meet?
It meets once a mo- once a week during the legislative session. Mondays, I think it's from twelve to one.
And this is a blessing now because it's zoomable. It used to be down in the basement of the Capitol, which is also pretty fun and pretty cool, but, you know, it's easier to zoom.
Sure is. Okay, and, um, how do we sign up?
I sent you the link.
Okay, got it.
So, but you need to, so Mayor, if you want to just assign to, um, administer, you know, people on staff and do it yourself, that's great. If you want another council member to do it, you know, that's something you could decide.
Okay, well, let me ask, uh, who would be interested in serving on this? Ah, Cameron, was that, Molly, did you hold up your hand or did you, uh, just adjust your glasses?
I think I was adjusting my glasses.
Nope, good enough. You moved. It's yours.
Did I see you hold up your hand?
Who?
Sorry, Mayor, my phone is fighting me. I'm very interested. I have a work conflict, unfortunately.
Okay, you'd like to do it, but, uh,
Who are our current, current members who are like?
Kate Black and Tom Pollard.
Kate Black and Tom Pollard, yeah.
But if you and I showed up there Monday, they'd let us vote. That's just how they are, but it would be nice for them to give them some names. Holly, you should do it.
I mean, yeah, I, I would, um, uh, it would be customary for the mayor and senior staff, uh, the mayor and/or elected officials to participate, and if none are interested, then senior staff. Um, I think it'd be a great role for, for a future town manager.
Yeah, I do too, but the trouble is, we've got to do it right now, uh, because it's in session, right, Polly? I mean, this is.
Correct. We're halfway through, I think.
Let me, let me suggest that it's, uh, uh, Cameron, who I think who is not scratching his head, but actually held up his hand, uh, Chris and me. Any, um, suggestions, thoughts, otherwise? Okay.
And here's the perfect example of what John Byrne was talking about. It's like, you just better make sure that what you're voting for and talking about is okay with the council. Which you will, because we're all pretty much going the same direction on this kind of stuff at the Hill anyway, but it's a good example of how things could go differently.
Yeah, I mean, um, my, my, I believe I have a sense of what the council wants in these areas, but if there was some question, I'd go back to, you know, pulsing each of you and say, what do you think about this? That's, that's what I would do. Any other new business? In that case, um, ah, somebody just hold, held up their hand, was it?
I did, um, uh, no, it's Carolyn. I might be a little bit late. So we're not doing the, um, Marshall's report because Mike's not here in the noise ordinance, and we don't need to do anything about that at this time.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we're, we're going to wait for Mike to, to do that.
Okay.
He's. I can, I can give you an update on that, either offline or now, if you want, Cameron.
Whatever everyone's preference is.
Why, why don't you give a, a paragraph, Cameron?
Okay, so, so the, the Marshall's office had issued two, uh, warnings for the noise violations, and so we have had a discussion, uh, with the Marshall and staff, and we're going to follow up with those property owners to get a noise mitigation plan and see if we can reach, you know, some agreement on how to mitigate that in the future. If there's other violations, the Marshall's office would respond to that. And if the mitigation plan doesn't work, or if there's other incidences, the staff will work with, uh, the property to try and mitigate that. And ultimately, it comes down to if, if we can't, you know, get compliance with uh, the mitigation plan or, or discussions, then we'll just have to resort to enforcement and go from there. So that's kind of where we're at until Mike gets back, and then we follow up with getting the mitigation plan from those properties.
But the, the one repeat offenders now had their warning for the season. They have to produce the mitigation plan, and so presumably if the mitigation doesn't plan, they'll start earning tickets.
Yeah, the warning is good for thirty days, so if, if they don't have any other violations within thirty days, it would reset to another warning. Um, but, you know, we can look at that and evaluate, and, and we're not, the town is not necessarily obligated to, to only respond with a citation. We can respond, uh, with other health and safety issues, and, you know, we can work with property owners outside of the, the criminal citation to try and correct the problem, which is what we're going to try and do.
But ultimately, what we're trying to do is, is to get them to comply with the noise ordinance. I mean, that's, that's where we're going. And if it's not working, then we'll figure out something else that will. Okay, any other new business? All right, our favorite motion to adjourn.
Can I, Mayor, can I just ask a clarifying question? Because we have, um, the discussion of the possible action on a closed door, do we actually have to take a vote to not have that? You don't, you can just skip over it and.
And I think that as I, in the very fine print at the bottom of the, of the, um, agenda, uh, doesn't it say something we could always have a, a, um, a closed-door session if, if it was needed? Or maybe not?
Some towns have that, some towns just have it standing on their agenda in case, just to make sure that they give a notice of it, but this town doesn't usually, you know, I think this is the first closed session I've had since I've been here. Maybe there's been one other.
We used to do that when we were in court with two or three different land use issues at the same time, but.
I mean, I see the notice, last, the last bullet under notice provision says, by most of the town council pursuant to Title fifty-two, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, council may vote to hold a closed meeting for, uh, for any of the purposes identified. So don't we always have the option of doing that without, uh, adding it to the agenda?
I, my recommendation is to be as upfront and make it, you know, as predictable as possible. So if you think, if it's kind of, I mean, I don't have the agenda in front of me right this second, but I think it's pretty small where it's, you know, it's in this really tiny.
It is, it is. It's, it's, it's the last bullet. That's it.
Yeah, so, you know, that's a catch-all, but if we know we're going to do it, let's put it on the agenda. If we have an emergency and we have to do it, we'll rely on that. But it's better to, just if we know, let's just put a time next to it and, and do it, so.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Uh, somebody asked that question. I, I don't remember who, might have been. It was Jen, okay. Um, any other business for this evening? Which is what it is. All right. Thank you very much for your participation and indulging us all to run half an hour, thirty-three minutes over the, a lot of time. Appreciate it very much.
You do need to motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have to have a motion.
Let's move to close the meeting.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Enjoy the snow. It's dumping in Park City right now. It's blown hard, so must be crazy in Atlanta.
It's nuking.